All right, good evening. This is the Joint General Government Town Council Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Meeting, Thursday, April 15, 2021, 6:00 PM, in the council chambers via remote participation. Just for the record, Councilor Steves is the chairman of this subcommittee. He is online, will be participating remotely, but due to the fact that he is participating remotely and given the makeup of the part of the committee being here, I'm going to moderate the meeting. I will not participate as a voting member because there is a quorum and all members are present from the subcommittee. So my sole purpose tonight will be to moderate and just run the meeting through the chair. So I guess, Councilor Steves, everything would be addressed through me if the councilors have questions, correct?
That's what I was thinking, Ken. Thanks, Jack.
What's that?
That's what I was thinking. Thanks, Jack.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the General Government Town Council is being conducted via hybrid remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted in the council chambers, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cii.southbridge.m us as soon as we are able to. A roll call vote will be required for all votes taken under this order. Roll call. Chairman, General Government, Gus Steves.
Present.
Present remotely. Councilor Michael Marquetti.
Present.
Councilor Jacqueline Ryan.
Present.
Citizen Member Denise Clements.
Present.
Citizen Member Martina Shea.
Present.
And for the record, Chairman Jovan from the council is present, as well as Councilor Catrona. Item two, review of the fiscal year 2022 Town Council budget in the amount of $20,550, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to the council as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Councilor Steves, do you want to start it off, or you defer to the town manager on this?
I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Subcommittee Chairman, citizen members, councilors, and everybody who's watching this evening. Before we start off, I just want to mention that yesterday, the House Ways and Means Committee released its FY 22 budget, and we have a long way to go before we will know the final numbers for the state budget. But the House version has already increased spending that's based on some of the federal monies, the enhanced Medicaid reimbursement, as well as some changes in mass health enrollment. So we'll have to see how this plays out, what that may mean for cities and towns, and specifically Southbridge. But we built our budget off of H1, which is the governor's budget that was put out. There's always some give and take. I wouldn't anticipate it would go below the governor's budget, but you never know. But right now, the House is proposing something higher, and as they go through the process, I'll keep you updated. But for now, we're working off the governor's budget. And with that, I will just quickly go over the Town Council budget. As you can see, there's no change since last year. We've kept it level funded. That's consistent with the message that we sent out, and I've made you all aware of in the past, that we were working off of what we consider to be level service budgets. That means other than contracted salaries or the non-union COLA increases or required steps, we'd asked all departments to keep all of their expenditures level funded, and this budget is no different than the others in that regard.
Okay. Questions? Councilor Steves, anything?
I was just curious. I forgot this. What is the special services line for?
What's that?
What's the special services line for? I forgot.
Karen, do you know what special services are for that?
I believe it's for the updates, for the, like, the bylaws.
The code services.
The code, yeah.
That's right, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Councilor Marquetti?
Thank you. I've looked at this budget, this particular budget here for Town Council for a couple years now, and it doesn't seem like we've ever come close to this amount. And I'm just wondering if we should, if we should consider cutting this down a little bit. I know it's level funded, and I appreciate that, but for the last three years, we've never come close to this, so.
So I have a follow-up question. Councilor Marquetti, could you specifically state which line does not come close? I know that conference and meetings, while we have it at 3,500, the MMA did a remote, so we may go back to in-person, so do you know which line items you're talking about?
I'm looking at the overall budget of the Town Council of $20,550. I don't have the other numbers with me, but it just looked like it was like, I don't think we even came close to half of this, but I just, I was just questioning whether we should consider not cutting it in half, but just trimming it a little bit.
Yeah. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I was actually along the same lines as Councilor Marquetti. I was looking more specifically. I see that you kept the recording clerk position at the same level, which is fine. It's just, looking at previous years, we didn't come close to spending 10 grand on her. So I was wondering what the rationale was with keeping it at 10 grand if she's not doing nearly that many hours, because I get that this is a go-as-you need kind of thing, not as a, this is how many hours per week, right?
So when Ms. Harneys and I looked at a lot of these that don't have department heads, and we were basing it on previous proposed budgets, as we've talked about, a lot of what we do is forecasting. You try and put a number in. Granted that it hasn't always come up to that level. You never know what your expenditures could be during the course of the year. So we did keep it at that particular number, and I don't know if Ms. Harneys has anything else to add, but just based on historical uses of the budget.
I do know, Councilor Ryan, last year when we talked about, and maybe the other members that were here last year on the budget, we did talk specifically about the salary and wage item for the recording clerk, because there were requests from councilors to have her, or whoever the recording clerk is, to do all subcommittee meetings, because we're missing subcommittee minutes. So therefore, we upped that line item to make sure that we had enough money in that account, because we were running short the year before, because we didn't have enough money. So we, that was a request to council to up, increase that, so that we'd have the capacity based on the number of, of subcommittee meetings. And I think that was a conversation that we had, and I think right now, a lot of our meetings, we record, and she's not present for those subcommittee meetings, so therefore, she's not present, that we're paying her an hourly wage for that. She's just doing the hourly wage when she watches the meeting and types the minutes out. So I don't know if there'd be an impact next year on that, if we come back into in-house meetings or not, but I know that was the conversation we had last year about that specific line item.
Okay, that, seeing that history helps, because if she's going to be doing recordings of our minutes for our meetings at the subcommittee level as well, that's perfectly fine, just like you said this year, she hasn't been here, so that's why it caught my attention. But the intention is to have her come in person when we're back in person, as we are starting now to go forward with in-person meetings. I think that's a discussion we should have and make sure that if we are meeting, since we are having subcommittee meetings in person, maybe having her back here for in-person meetings.
I do know that she has communicated to me that due to COVID, she had concerns, but was going to be available after April 26 to be in person, so because of the vaccination schedule that she had stated that she was going to have. Councilor Steves, and then Councilor.
At this particular meeting, she said she had a conflict about she was planning on doing the minutes by recording. I know there've been a few situations also where I'm sure that there were, for some of the shorter meetings, we didn't actually call her in to do the recordings or to do the minutes, and maybe we should have her do all of them. But that's, I mean, that would, even if she did all of them, I think that probably still was the 10 grand, but I think I'd rather have the 10 grand in there with a little extra cushion in case we have to have some more meetings for whatever reason. We can make sure we have the coverage rather than not having the coverage, considering, quite frankly, I think several of us have seen over the last, over a few years, how much extra effort it is to do our own meetings, and it makes it very, do our own minutes, and it makes it very difficult to effectively run the meeting, participate in the meeting, and take the minutes, and do the minutes all at the same time. I just don't understand. So having her on, on staff doing the minutes is a big difference.
I have to say, I have no problem if that's truly the case. So if that's, if she's going to be coming back going forward on April 26, then I have no problem leaving it as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to comment that, you know, as we said, she takes the minutes now from a recording. Normally, she would come in, takes the minutes, so she's here for that time, but then she has a certain amount of time allotted, so that's where that extra comes in for those who don't, aren't aware of that. There is like a little extra going on, because now she goes back and she makes sure that the minutes are correct, and she has a certain amount of time allotted, depending on the time of the, so many hours based on the time of the meeting. So that would increase this, you know, should she do the in-person, just in general, so just thought I'd bring it up.
Any other, Councilor Marquetti?
What about conference and meetings, dues and subscriptions? I know I've, I don't know, I don't know if there's going to be too many conferences and meetings this year. Not, like I said, I don't see why we couldn't cut it a little bit.
So I do.
But I wasn't really looking at the recording clerk's salary. She's definitely worth her weight in gold, but I, I was thinking of maybe something else here, like maybe 250 off of conferences, 250 off of dues and subscriptions. But on the other hand, you know, if you think that 20,550 is okay, I think, what was it last year, 12,000, something like that?
12,550, which is level funded. So I do know on the dues and subscriptions, we had to do a transfer last year because the MMA increased the dues. So those are the dues that we have to pay as a community, and it came to council, am I correct, Karen, on that, that we had to increase the transfer because there was an increase in the MMA cost to the town of Southbridge?
Yes, I do believe it was like a $5 transfer, so that's why we want to have a little bit of leeway in there.
Right. And again, the conference and meetings, we put that in there. I think that's a, a cost that, so that all councils have the ability to go to the MMA if it's, if it's available. I know it's valuable information. If we don't spend it, it goes back to free cash. Councilor Adams? Can't hear you there, sir.
You could write it down.
All right, Councilor. I know you probably had something very valuable to say. All right. Do I, any other discussion from anyone? All right. Roll call. I'll go. Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I know there was a request to move the boards and committees. Do I have anything else with consent to move that up? Is that all right with everybody?
Which ones?
Item, Agenda Item 17, because he has a conflict meeting at 6:30, so, okay? So that's Agenda Item 17. If there's no opposition, it's a review of the FY 2022 Boards and Committees budget in the amount of $7,281, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Ryan, second by Ms. Clements. Okay. You want this to go to Eric, or it's Boards and Commissions, Item 17?
Yeah, go ahead with Eric. Well, I should go to the manager first. Should we go to the manager first?
Manager, Mr. Manager. Sorry to throw a curveball there, but.
I was going chronologically, so it's going to take me a second. Again, we're going to Boards and Committees, you say?
Boards and Committees, yeah.
Just make sure I've got.
It starts with the central mass regional planning.
Page 17.
Conservation Commission's on top of it.
Yep. It's conservation?
Always minus. It's stapled with Conservation Commission as the first thing.
No, I have mine.
Oh, that's weird. That's what I got.
So central mass planning.
Page 17.
In the little corner of this.
Mine are not laid out by page.
Yeah, mine doesn't have page numbers on it.
Right under, it says newness, it should be a P17?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in, it's not in numerical order, so there you go. That's why.
I don't have the account numbers memorized.
Mine's not there.
I haven't memorized all the account numbers, and that's what makes it easier, because you can flip through and get.
Well, I guess, Karen, is there any increase in these Boards and Commissions? Or is it?
Well, what I'd like to do is go through, there's a couple different Boards and Commissions that we need to go through that come up to the amount.
Okay.
So we can start with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, which has an annual increase of 2.5%. That's a membership fee for CMRPC.
So that's mandated?
Yes.
Manded, yes. Okay. Any questions on CMRPC? So it's mandated, we have to pay it? It's a one way or another?
So it's for $5,031 for fiscal '22.
Conservation Commission?
The next one's Conservation Commission, recommended at $1,000 level funded, and Eric is on remotely.
Okay. Any questions on Conservation? Councilor Steves, any questions?
I know that, I know that Maureen uses a lot of the educational stuff. How many of the other people do?
What did you say?
And I should, just for clarification, just for the record, that Maureen, my partner, is on Conservation, so.
Okay. What does that cover? Eric, what does the $1,000 cover?
It would cover any supplies that they may need, and typically, it really is there for their dues to the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission, as well as two conferences, one in the spring and one in the fall. Now, the reason why the amount is, you know, the amount spent so far is lower than usual is because for both the fall and the spring conference, they offered an à la carte option where you could attend the seminars and classes that you wanted, and they were around $20 a piece, whereas typically, the full cost of the conference is $225 to $250 per person.
Right. Okay. Any questions on?
How many members are going there?
So typically, I have between, well, typically, I mean, the past years, it's been one, two members who've gone, and we're really pushing to try to get, you know, two to three members to go and participate in the, in the trainings and things that they offer.
Yeah, I think, I think all of them should go, but then again, I got to admit, I've never been to MMA, so.
I would love for everyone to attend. I would need a larger budget if that was the case.
I'm sure that's true. Thanks.
Any questions on Conservation? None? Next, Zonis?
The next is zoning, one appeals for $250.
Any questions on that? Next.
Okay. Historical Commission, $500.
Any questions on Historical Commission?
The Licensing Board, $500, level funded.
Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. Looking at this, you got a transfer this year, correct, for 73.50 to cover? Because the current, the 2020 hour, the previous year, excuse me, 73.30, which was in, because it's been level funded for years, and then we transferred, the council transferred 73.50. This year, you only spent 367. Is this one you expect to keep under 500, considering that one year you did go over?
If I could, yes, I believe so. There was just a lot of activity in last fiscal year. I don't know if it was with different advertisements that they had to do, and that's why it went over a little bit, but historically, it hasn't.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Yep. And I believe that was the explanation when we transferred those funds at that time. Okay, next.
I just was looking here, I don't know if I missed, no, I think that's all of them.
Okay. Any other questions? See none? Roll call. Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. Okay.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you moving that for me.
Yep. All right. Get back on track. Item, Agenda Item 3, review the fiscal year 2022 Town Manager budget in the amount of $332,945, entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Ryan, second by Councilor Steves. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The overall budget here increased 9.5%, and that's largely due to contractual obligations because of my, the change in compensation and contractual obligations when I came into the position. There are some step increases, as well as some longevity, but we tried to keep most of the other expenses, office expenses, the same. We reduced our printing a little bit. Our dues and subscriptions went down. We found we had some print articles that we weren't always using. Some of them could be accessed online, so those were the only real changes there. But otherwise, it's all contractual related.
Ms. Harneys?
Yes, thank you. And what I also wanted to point out is when we get to the legal attorney budget, there will be a reduction in there that will help to offset the increase here in the town manager's salary.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, I don't know if you briefly touched on this, the printing has been completely zeroed out.
Yeah, if I could.
Ms. Harneys?
I believe what it is, is that now we can either do everything through the, through the photocopying, we don't have to send anything out to be printed anymore, so it'll be in the other line items for supplies, and they make copies on the copier.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors or members? Councilor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This budget, this department budget seems a little high to me, nine and a half percent. I appreciate that the legal fees are reduced, but they're not really reduced, they're just transferred. We're still paying for legal fees, they're just, now you're doing it instead of the lawyers doing it. So it's either, legal fees are paid in-house or they're paid out-of-house. Either way, we got to pay for legal fees. It's now part of your salaries, but anyway, we're still paying for someone to do legal, that's all I'm saying. What about specialized service? What exactly is that?
That one, I would probably have to defer to Ms. Ryan, who's not here. Again, it's usually when we have to do something outside the norm for sending out for, like, the code services, part of that was in the other budget as well. But I just want to point out the issue you raised before. The legal, you'll probably find, is reduced because my approach to calling Town Council is different. You're paying me a salary to be a professional manager. The fact that I can also occasionally discern legal issues and not call is an added bonus. So I would say that, that shouldn't be factored in when you're looking at the salary and the total items here. These issues were all based on the contract that was negotiated between me and the council. But the Finance Director wanted to point out, though, that there is also savings this year, just coincidentally, in the legal. I think that was the point that was trying to be made.
I'm not criticizing you. I just was saying.
No, I try to save the town money wherever possible, so if I don't have to call, I won't call, you know? And we've tried to be pretty good about that, so I just want to point that out.
And I'm sorry, I missed you on specialized services. What?
I would have to defer to Ms. Ryan in my office, because I don't have the exact explanation for that one. Ms. Harneys may, however.
I think, if I could, I think I would be able to help on that. I do believe, I think Cheryl said that they do use that for maintenance on the time clock.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Maintenance on the time clock?
Yeah, they have a timestamp.
We have to, any correspondence that comes in, we have an old-fashioned clock that when you insert the paper, it timestamps it received with the date and time, so we have to keep track of, especially when it comes to taking in bids and things of that nature, because you have to make sure you receive it before a certain date and time, so.
And DP's supplies, what is that? That would be.
That's data processing supplies.
All right, thank you. In-state travel?
I think that's just carried over. I do not put in for any mileage, so that would be for anybody else on staff. I know normally, Ms. Ferrin in the office, she is, part of her responsibilities are HR specialists. She normally attends certain conferences throughout the year. Today, she was able to do one remotely. I anticipate when we go back to in-person meetings, she will have to travel for some of those.
All right. Lastly, this is probably going to sound odd, but the confidential clerk, that doesn't seem like very much for a confidential clerk. I don't, I'm not saying let's increase her salary, but I'm just pointing out that there's quite a, as far as I know, confidential clerks are, when I first got on the Town Council, I wasn't even sure what it was, but asking other people about it, that's something that is very well needed by someone executive in an office somewhere, so I just thought that was kind of low, kind of a low salary. I know it's part-time, but anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Steves, you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. See none? Roll call. Should just keep this on this side here. Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
No.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one with Councilor Marquetti in opposition.
Before we go to the next item, Mr. Chairman, just for a quick reference to whoever caller two is, could you please identify yourself for the record?
Whoever called in, could you just state who you are?
My name is Francine. I'm just listening in.
Okay, Francine. Francine, follow. Councilor Ryan?
It's actually four to one. They're five.
Oh, there's five?
It's public. I just need to, I just need to identify you for the record, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan.
No problem. I'm so used to not everybody being present, I guess. Did I say that out loud?
I'm sorry. Item four, review the fiscal year 2022 accounting budget in the amount of $182,797, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Ryan and Ms. Shea. Mr. Town Manager?
We have Ms. Harneys here this evening. Again, this, I don't want to get repetitive, and maybe I'll just mention, allude to this going forward, that these are level service budgets, and the primary reason for the increases are going to be salaries, steps, and COLAs. And there are some savings, or reductions, I should say, and Ms. Harneys can talk to you about those.
Thank you. Ms. Harneys?
Sure, thank you. In the salary and wages, is the 2% for my salary, and the assistant, and she's also on her, I believe it's her last step, so she has a step increase. That's why it's a little bit higher at the three and a half percent. The longevity is level funded. The office supplies, I took a good look at these line items. The office supplies I brought down by two hundred and fifty dollars for a decrease of twenty percent. The mileage and in-state travel I left because hopefully next spring that I'll be able to go to my conference at UMass and the assistant goes as well because she's actually preparing to become a certified, a certified accountant. So she might be taking her test within the next year or two. The conferences and meetings, I brought that down by three hundred dollars, you know, just looking, looking on the past use on it and the dues and subscriptions, I kept level funded at six hundred and twenty-five.
Thanks. Counsel Ryan?
Just a comment. Thank you, Karen. You, like I said, the cost increases are obligational. They're not things you can just pick and choose and you found places in which you could save the town some money. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Counsel Steves, you all set?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one with Counsel Marquetti opposed. Item five, review the fiscal year 2022 assessors budget in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Clements. Ms. Town Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I will just defer right over to Mr. Conoyar, our principal assessor, as well as our IT manager for the Assessors Department.
Thank you. Mr. Conoyar, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a level services budget. The only changes are I have a five hundred dollar increase in longevity as one of my employees has reached one of his milestones, Mark Genero, and he'll be getting five hundred dollars more in longevity. I've made a couple of other minor adjustments by reducing the assessor's data processing line item by a hundred and fifty dollars and increasing the line item for printing by a hundred dollars for additional envelopes that we need for mailing and so forth. And the conference and meetings line have increased that by fifty dollars as well. The net effect is zero to the overall budget with those adjustments. And also per your instructions, I've increased the non-union personnel salary amounts by two percent over fiscal year 2021.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counsel Ryan?
Just a quick one. You said you increased conferences and meetings. Do you expect that the cost to go to these meetings is going up?
Uh, no, wait. Just a moment if you would. Sorry. Forgive me. It's not that they're going up, but we were really minimally funded to begin with. The conferences and meetings that we do are, for example, one of them, UMass, Karen mentioned UMass, training, those courses are now about five hundred dollars apiece. And then there are some small, smaller courses and meetings and so forth. I need the, I need the credits to maintain my accreditation as a certified Massachusetts accredited assessor, as well as one of my employees, Mark Genero, has achieved that designation a long time ago. He needs those credits as well. This year was kind of, the meetings were a lot less. So next year, it's not that the prices are going up, but we were minimally funded before. And I don't want to be, in years past, if we needed an extra fifty, a hundred dollars, we would request a transfer from one of our other accounts and so forth. And I don't want to be doing that if possible.
So if I can continue?
Go ahead, Counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Please excuse me just for one second. Actually, Will, the increase is in dues and subscriptions, not in conferences and meetings?
Excuse me. I apologize for that. That's exactly right. I'm mistaken there. The dues and subscriptions was the one I had to transfer monies before or lose some of our association meetings. That's the one I had to transfer to. I apologize.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You okay? All right. Anyone else? Counsel Steves, you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Better write that down, Counsel. Item, Agenda Item Six, review the fiscal year 2022 Treasurer Collector Budget in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand nine seventeen. Entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Ryan and Counsel Steves. Mr. Town Manager? Treasurer Collector?
So the budget.
You have to speak into the mic because I cannot hear you at all.
So this budget as presented is basically a level service budget. There are, what I'm sure you consider significant increases in the salary lines and that has to do that most of my staff is, half of my staff is, you know, been here a long time and has a lot of longevity and they are maxed out while the other half, including myself, are still on steps. So both me and Carmen will be at full steps for the full year of 2022, which we were only for a partial year this year. And we have a newest, our newest employee, Christian, is just walking up his steps and those steps are more than the two percent, the standard for an employee. But that's the schedule that we hired people under and that people expect to get paid. We did eliminate the overtime budget, was specifically there to deal with the conversion to MUNIS and the extra time that we had to put in for that. Will and I are just now completing the last steps of that. So we don't anticipate, while there's a lot of fine tuning left to do, we don't anticipate the kind of commitment it has taken to get us to this place. Everything else I think is pretty level. I know that the mileage had gone up and that's for conferences. And I know that in my first year here, we had to ask for a transfer. And that's because in the past, Mindy and Nei used to go to the conferences together because they both lived here in town. I'm coming from the opposite direction, so we cannot commute together to that, to that meeting. And both she and I are certified and need to maintain our certification and need those credits. I believe I also have a little bit extra in there because I had hoped that the collector's office staff, which is newer, there are some conferences, not for certification, but for newer employees to learn the just general rules of the government. So the more they know, the better they can serve the community. They're nominal costs, but they, we had hoped to have them attend last year and that wasn't possible. The big line item there for specialized services encompasses a couple of different things. The majority of it goes to tax title. So it, you know, the cost of the legal, getting things through land court and doing foreclosures. We also have printing costs in that. As we moved to MUNIS, some of our printing had to be outsourced just because of how the system works. And we have services for the bills that we print in-house. We have a folding machine that needs maintenance. I believe that's all that's in there. Look at my notes, though. So unless you have any questions, that's all we have.
Questions, comments? Counsel Steves?
Thank you. Melissa, I was curious, with the tax title, what kind of, how effective have we been so far as, in terms of collecting either the back taxes or selling the properties and getting some money for them or finding, finding people in there who can actually use them and not have?
So, so we have not done as much tax title this year as in past years for a number of reasons. One, you know, during the crisis, it's not really okay to dislocate people from their homes. So.
I just shouldn't.
So we are sort of putting the pause on all properties which are occupied. We have been aggressive in all of the vacant lots so that we could move forward with something with the financing that we had. The land court is very slow at this time. We did not have an auction this year. I'm sort of waiting for some more properties to be actually taken by the town so that we have a good offering to bring people out for the auction. Right now, we just have the leftovers from last year. We have done pretty good on collections this year. I think Karen's budget report, up until March, we had sixty-seven thousand dollars in collected in tax title. Just this month alone, we've collected another forty-five, forty-six. So, so we've done pretty good on collections this year and I anticipate a large property paying off within ninety days and that, that would be another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks.
Question for you, Melissa. I'm looking at the report that just came out today from Ms. Harnoys and it says that in specialized services, we did a transfer of twelve thousand nine twelve and already at forty-eight, eight, sixteen for expenses. What was up this year that we had specialized services that are?
I don't believe that's a transfer. I think that was a holdover.
Or a holdover, but I'm just saying, it says transfer adjustment.
Yeah, yeah. So it was last year, we had a lot of activity at the end of the year and we hadn't been fully built for it. So we held over to place a large group of properties in tax title, a large group of vacant land properties. Because when we were faced with the change in the environment, I thought that it would best use to, to, to use the money to deal with properties that had been sort of overlooked in the past for more profitable properties. But it was a good opportunity for me to clean them up and that's why we did that. And we've been very aggressive with those properties, the vacant land properties. So when, when this runs out, we do have some money in the, there's a law that was passed several years ago and we have tax title recovery money that as people pay things back, we get a portion of those fees back in order to reinvest in the foreclosure process. Also, this month, I should probably by early May do the first ad in two years for tax title. It's at the end of the time limit. I can't let it go any further. And so we will have to do that, that large ad for tax title. That can be kind of pricey and I probably do two years within the next sixty days.
So my question is, is forty-five thousand enough since you already spent forty-eight?
Because we have the surplus in the additional funds in the tax title recovery, as long as we're able to keep maintaining that, as long as we can keep collecting and things don't, as things, if things go to auction, then we don't get that money. So if we're collecting, then that account's usually pretty safe and we can continue to be aggressive on properties that we're interested in.
Okay. As long as you have enough, because I just, any other questions? See none? Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Review of the fiscal year 2022 Town Attorney Budget in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Citizen Member Clements. Mr. Town Manager?
Again, thank you very much. Ms. Harnoys and I met and we discussed this. We reduced it. Previous year's budgets were higher. Last year was a hundred and twenty-seven and it was, the revised number was one fifteen. We, we've reduced it down to one seventeen five. You'll see to date, at the time of this printing, the actuals were twenty-three thousand dollars. I would say part of it goes to the, the comments that Counsel Marquetti and I had a few minutes ago. I've tried to make judicious use of our legal services. We have some ongoing contract negotiations. I try not to call them until it's a point where we need to get them involved. Ms. Clements knows we met yesterday with our cable counsel, but we try not to pick up the phone every time something comes in. I've been able to handle a fair amount of exchanges and talk to the attorneys at the various state agencies, be it DK and the AG's Office, Inspector General with regard to procurement and a few other things. We are fortunate. We only have one labor union that's going for renegotiation this year. And as I indicated before, I'll handle the initial phases and depending upon how it goes, I'll leverage labor counsel if needed. We have had a couple unusual events. We had a dog hearing that we had to require outside counsel for. But there are a few things from time to time, as you know, I've kept the council aware. We've had a couple of things that come in where I can't be here and go to court, nor would I. But those are the matters that we rely on counsel for. Some are related to our licenses and code enforcement. So we, that's where we leverage our attorneys. But overall, we've, even the department heads, if they call, sometimes we can work out an issue without having to pick up the phone and call our counsel. We continue to use Attorney Capera for some of our local issues. And in general, I get requests from staff if we need to go to outside counsel. So we're monitoring those costs. So that's what we have here this evening. If you have any questions, happy to answer to you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Clements?
Thank you. Just a comment to, to the Town Manager's point. You know, for instance, a non-compliance letter, the lawyer offered to, to draw something up, but our Town Manager's very capable of completing some, a task such as that. And in the past, numerous years, that hasn't been the case. When I was on council, I can say it from that standpoint and I can say it from having been off. Many, many things, letters just couldn't be written without a lawyer doing it for us. And it just, so it's nice to know that it can be done the way it should be done, the way it had been done in the past. And that's just common sense. If you've got a good Town Manager, you're gonna be able to get a basic letter, you know, sent out and, and go spend the money when you need to spend the money. So just wanted to, thank you for that.
Yesterday, the attorney offered to write the letter to Charter and I said, that's all right. We'll do it.
Yeah. And I do, I do know personally, my experience with the Town Manager is that there's many times that the attorneys are trying to keep him on the phone and he says, I'm done. I'm ready to roll. Let's go. And, you know, that's refreshing. You know, this is really is one of those just in case accounts, in case something really blows up. But I do appreciate the Town Manager's diligence in this account personally because I know for three years, we really hammered why we're spending so much on legal fees on simple stuff. The, the major stuff that, that needs, I have no problem with picking up the phone, count, I just want to bounce this off of you, but that's very few and far between. So I appreciate the fact that, and this is good and this is, you know, throughout the next year, we look at it and we see where it goes and if it's all going well, we evaluate it.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, there are times though, I'll want a second set of eyes.
Absolutely.
And, and that's when I'll call them. And usually I'll say, I've written this, would you just look at this? And some of that, case in point, when we're doing some of the, I didn't do it with the marijuana, going in and getting the local option or the, we didn't do it when we went for the liquor licenses, when we drafted the home rule petition. We did it as a group. We reviewed it and we sent it in. But for some of the potential things for the ballot question, I've come up with the drafting and you can find it. It's right out of statute, but I usually get a second set of eyes because I would hate to miss one word somewhere on something like that.
Yeah. And I think the difference is, I just, I want to echo, the difference is you have drafted and said, hey, take a look at it. It's not reinventing the wheel and say, hey, analyze this statute and write me what your recommendation is. It's something that's coming directly from your office. And I have no problem with a second set of eyes checking it just to make sure that, yep, it meets legal muster. And that's good. Where in the past, we had a lot of stuff that went to the attorney, draft start to finish. And, and that's frustrating because some of that stuff didn't need to. So I appreciate it. Any other discussion on this one? Counsel Katron?
Quickly for you, Officer Town Manager, let's see if it's a typo. Can you explain what the municipal heating officer is?
Oh, should be hearing.
That's what I thought. I just, for clarification purposes.
Just the second page of that.
Yeah, I see that. I actually saw that before and I forgot to mention.
Oh, makes sense. A heating hearing. It can be heated. Those hearings can be heated, Joe.
Counsel Ryan?
I just also want to echo a point being made about the cut in legal service, legal services. And it's something that's definitely a lot of us have been talking about for years. And we've been talking about in general government for years.
Talking about it for five, six years.
And it's nice to have a manager that's there just to make sure, get legal counsel to dot, cross your Ts and dot your Is, not write the whole thing out for us. And that speaks to your level of experience. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
In closing comment on this, that's not to say we could have a year where a lot of things happened. I mean, we could, there were contract cycles that come up. There could be other things that we just don't foresee that come up that can make it vary and fluctuate. And that's why you do leave some level of cushion in there and we still have one quarter to go and we have a few things. We have, we have a lot of these big contracts that are still out there that depending upon how they go, we may have to, to bring in some assistance.
Just the fact that we have a manager that's managing it, I appreciate it. So, any other discussion? Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Item eight, review the fiscal year 2022 Town Clerk Budget in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand six ninety-nine and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Ryan, Counsel Steves, Mr. Town Manager?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Same comments as before about using level service budget. And we have Madam Clerk, Ms. Bonnades here and I can let you hear from her with regard to the budget.
Hello, thank you.
Good evening, Madam.
There was an increase because of longevity and also Julie is moving up a step in this, in this budget. Other than that, it's level funded. I also put in for a, to move me from the MS eighteen to the A nine and I was looking for approval, but the Town Manager is not recommending that.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I, I do have an issue with this. I've brought it up in years past. Maddie's a department head. She has extra responsibilities because she is elected by the people. she is elected by the people of this community. And the fact that she's not at the A level with other department heads does bother me fundamentally. I think it's a fundamental unfairity, it's a moral issue for me. I get that we compare our town clerks' pay to other town clerks around us. But I also think our town clerk does a much better job and has much more experience than other town clerks around us. While the one in Stirbridge was messing up ballots two years in a row, ours was doing well, doing well at expanding access, expanding voter opportunity, working within state guidelines. And the clerk's office has also done well with the vaccine distribution, having people sign up. I signed up through their office. And I do have an issue with not paying people what they're properly worth. And for me, she is worth an A9 and should be getting an A9. And I'm going to recommend that step increase when we go to full council, because this is, this is a moral issue for me. She is a department head, she has other responsibilities that other department heads do not have because she is directly elected by the people. And I think she should be paid what she is worth. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I do have to agree with Councilor Ryan. We have a first-class town hall altogether. I've been to others and not been quite satisfied with the services I've gotten here. You call, it's ready for you when you get there. I think that one of the things I've always thought in terms of, as you know, I was involved in the school system, that we need to pay people what they're worth. Someone will, someday she will leave us, and I guarantee you that whoever we get in, we will pay them more money. That is something that I've always disliked, that we get a new fire chief, we have to pay him more, we get a new police chief, we pay them more, we get a new counselor, a new custodian. We always pay them more than we paid the one before, that we wouldn't give the raise to, so they left us. We need to hold on to our good staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
So there's been a couple of things that have been raised. We do have department heads that are A9s. And so I think if you want a set of precedents and say that all department heads should be at least A9 or higher, then you're going to have to address a couple of people. And I don't want to, I can elaborate on that if you want, or we can wait till we get to the final meeting. It's also been touched on that our clerks elected. And I should preface all this by saying, we have a great clerk. I get along well with Ms. Bonadie's. There's not an issue that I have with the performance in the clerk's office. I have mentioned to her, and I've been invited at some point to come to the Charter Commission, I have no problem with the clerk or keeping our clerk as long as she wants to be here. I do have concerns what happens, as you say, if she were to leave, because it's an elected position. And so you'll establish a position at an A9. There's a lot of certifications and a lot of institutional knowledge that most people need to have nowadays to be a clerk. Maybe 10, 20 years ago, elected clerks were fine. I worry if she were to leave. There's no guarantee that you can move somebody up from the office internally to take over that position. I mean, these are two fundamentally different things, the budget and the position. But this is something that I think also needs to be addressed if we're going to address this at the same time. I'm more than happy to bring some information forward when we come to the full budget hearing that, yes, if you want to look at a lot of cities and towns, I had our HR specialist do a survey through, they are on listservs to see what clerks make in comparable towns, and Ms. Bonadie's is at the top end of that. But we also asked what the duties of those various clerks are. And a lot of those clerk's offices do work that has been now done in my office, including public records requests, ethics, filings, and other duties. So I think if you're going to elevate the salary in that department, that you have to take back a lot of the responsibilities that normally fall in other clerk's offices that make that amount of money or more. So there has to be a give and take, I think, if you're going to do that. So I would respectfully request, if you're going to entertain that, that we have to have a broader discussion about what the function will be going forward, if we're going to raise it to that level. Because I can point to you at least one department head now that has a lot of responsibilities and more people reporting to them that are not on that schedule. And we had a similar discussion the other night about what's going to happen with the Economic Development Director, because somebody has to run that department down there. You will have several people and a part-time admin. So the other night, I thought I heard council say they didn't want to keep it at an A9. If you're now going to say every person who has supervisory capacities in this town has to be at an A9 or higher, you're going to have other people coming forward. So just bear all those things in mind. Thank you.
Council Ryan?
I just want to make clear, at least the other night, I did not say that I want him decreased from an A9. I personally do believe department heads should be at the A level. That is my personal opinion. I know Maddie, for years, I have advocated for Maddie to get this increase every time it's come up, because of the duties and responsibilities that are incumbent upon her. On the discussion about whether or not the person should be elected or appointed, I always favor the position of it being elected. I do favor the clerk being chosen by the people of this community. I think it's one of the few administrative positions left in the region that is still elected. This is not just a selfish thing. A lot of us, a lot of the region does continue to do this. I don't know how it is out back where you were. But in these smaller communities, having a local elected clerk brings more input from the community, in my opinion. So I would not favor a charter change that would make it appointed. But that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think, I would like the approach to take a look at that global look, because anytime I look at something like this, I take a look at, to leave the personality out of it, and you have to look position. It's no reflection on Maddie Bonadie's at all. But when you do a decision like this, you really have to say, what is the position, not the personality. We all can agree that fantastic job in the town clerk's office, this is the way it is right now, but you have to evaluate it on the position, not the personality. I would welcome a conversation about the position and leave the personality out of it, not the person that's in the position, an evaluation of what the position is. Because Maddie is not going to be here forever, and you may have somebody else come in here, how that position works. So I welcome a broader discussion about the position and what the responsibilities are, and should it be put to that level and not discuss the personality? Do you understand that, Maddie?
Oh, I absolutely do.
I mean, in all fairness, that's the way it has to be.
I absolutely do.
And any decision that we make, based on any department head or any department, has to have that kind of mentality, my personal opinion, that kind of mentality. Take, Karen, we could say, does a fabulous job as a finance director, and I love Karen, I want to give her a 20% raise because of what she did, great, but what's the position? So we can have a bigger discussion about this at another time, but that's my personal opinion on this particular topic. Council Steve's, do you have anything?
I basically agree with what both of you just said. And I think that the, I know that there are a few towns in our area that appoint their town clerks, most of them are still elected. It certainly would be worth discussing. I can throw it on Gen.gov for probably sometime after the election, I think would make sense. Once we get everything out of the way, the budget out of the way, the election out of the way, and then we'll have some more free time to do stuff like that. But as far as, as far as what's going on here, I think we could, that would be probably the best time to talk about the idea of whether we should reclassifying. And I agree with the Town Manager's point that if we reclassified this job, we'd end up reclassifying a couple of other jobs, which I don't know how much of an issue that would be, but it's something that we need to make sure that we understand before we do it. So I'm not necessarily opposed to the concept of doing it, but I think we need more information.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council Marquetti?
Thank you. I just have one question, just to clarify for me. Do we, is it normal to give elected officials longevity pay? I don't really know how that works, I'm just asking. If that's, if that's the normal thing, then okay, I just wasn't sure how that worked.
So I'm looking for, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, I want to say that the bylaws say that the compensation for the town clerk is established by the town council. So certain things are governed by the personnel rules, and I'm trying to pull it up here, I remember looking for it. Ms. Bonadie's may know, I can't find it off the top of my head, but I know that the, her compensation is set by the council. I know it's in the, in the...
It says in the bylaws that she's entitled to all other benefits under the...
Personnel rules and regs, so.
To the bylaw.
Right. So I think the council sets the dollar value, but all other benefits that fall to, every other employee fall to her as well. So sick time, vacation, you know, longevity, all those things.
Thank you.
Interesting. To dovetail with what you just said...
Go ahead, Council Steve's.
I'm sorry. Just to dovetail with what the manager just said, also in this case, Maddie has spent, was in the town clerk's office before she was elected to be a town clerk. So she's on, how long have you been elected? 10 years or so, Maddie?
I was first elected in 2003. I've been in the office since 1996.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
It's in chapter two, section, or chapter two dash 301.3, salary. The compensation of the town clerk shall be established by the town council. The town clerk shall receive and as additional compensation, the same sick days, holidays, vacation, personal days and other benefits as are afforded to other municipal employees generally. So that's in the bylaws.
All right. Any other discussion? Seen none. Roll call?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm, I'm...
Maybe I shouldn't say what I was going to say. It was, it might have caught me. No, I actually want to say it. For years, longevity has come up. And honestly, I get that those who had been exposed to it and earned it and, you know, they've been employees. But for years, that's something that came up with councils that I've been on in terms of whether or not going forward, longevity pay should be in the offering to new employees. Well, clearly it still has been, nothing seemed to have changed. There was a lot of, it seemed like it was going to, and then it didn't. And people would say, well, it's not fair, some are getting it, some aren't. And the point would be, no, all new hires would know, there's no longevity pay in there, it just doesn't exist anymore. You know, those who are grandfathered in would get it, and those who are new hires get hired at the rate, like everybody else, get their 2% increases if we can so afford 2% increases, and we move forward. Whether or not that's feasible or not, it's, as a citizen, as a former counselor, I truly believe that this longevity thing, I just don't agree with it. You set a salary, you set a pay, whatever, hourly, and that's what, that's what you pay your people. This earning, this earning deal, plus the 2%, plus the, I mean, it's nice, but it's just, from a business perspective, it's a little unrealistic, from, you know, outside of government, just saying. I just wanted to speak my piece on it, because I keep hearing longevity through this whole thing, and it's driving me nuts. That's all. It's just a personal, you know...
Before I go to Ms. Harnoyes, the Town Manager, I know Citizen Member Shea, we could talk about, many times that we've had conversations over longevity, over many, many contract negotiations on the school side, that that comes up all the time, when it comes up to, to the bargaining between, I get on the town side, but that always is an issue that we can never resolve.
But that's, it might be union or other things. But I'm saying, you know, we're talking about municipality can have a hiring policy, you know, it's, you're hired, here's your position, here's your, here's your rate, and here's it goes.
My point is that it comes up all the time, no matter what it is.
Grandfather in, everybody gets it who belong to it, but geez.
Ms. Harnoyes and then Mr. Town Manager.
I'm 99.9% sure that it was taken out of the non-union personnel regulations. The non-union employees do not get longevity any longer. Whoever was receiving it...
Melissa does not get it either, she's saying?
Yeah, whoever was receiving it as of that date will continue to receive it until they're no longer here. But no new employees, non-union, are receiving the longevity.
Okay, so they're getting their step increases.
But I believe it's still in the other union contracts.
Because they get their step increases too, from, from being here. I mean, there's the step increases as well. So that's what I'm saying, it was like double, triple dipping. So, okay, so longevity is not being offered to any new employees?
Non-union.
Not, I get that, yes, non-union.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So it was addressed?
I guess.
In the downtown.
I just, I...
Mr. Town Manager, did you?
No.
Council Ryan?
Just kind of a follow-up question, because it got me thinking. So if a department decided to go and join the union, would they then qualify for longevity pay?
It's a negotiation point.
Depends what union that may be in place, otherwise it'd be negotiated.
Maybe it is good we have a good attorney.
Yeah, it's negotiable. Any other questions, comments? Council Katron?
Thank you. Really quickly, just a quick question through the, for the Town Manager. As we go through the budgets tonight, as we went through the budgets in the last week and a half, I see mileage, $300, $250. Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we purchase, don't we have a vehicle to also utilize for conferences?
We, so I don't have a good handle on all of our vehicles. I've seen our fleet schedule. I know Mrs. Wodzinski has a copy of the fleet schedule for insurance purposes. We do have an electric vehicle, and I know certain people use that. But in some instances, people are leaving from their homes to go to and from these conferences, and it may be cheaper for us to have them do that than to drive here and come back, take a vehicle. That's what one of those options are there. I know we have staff that try and utilize that electric vehicle whenever possible to do things during the day. But it could get into, do you want somebody to take something on a weekend to their house? And then, you know, so occasionally have to have people use their personal vehicles.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call. Council Steve's?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
No.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries four one, with Council Marquetti opposed. Item nine, Agenda item nine, review of the fiscal year 2022 elections budget in the amount of $49,274, entertain a motion to submit to council as presented.
Some moved.
Second.
There's a second. Council Ryan, Council Steve's. We're going to the town clerk on this, Mr. Manager?
I will defer to Ms., or Madam Clerk, who's here.
Madam Clerk?
There's a decrease only because of the amount of elections that we have in the next fiscal year, as opposed to what we've had this year. And pretty much everything else is, is the same. Salary will decrease because of less election workers, less police officers. But pretty much everything else is status quo.
Any discussion? I guess, oh, go ahead, Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask about the salaries for the, those are for the poll workers, correct?
Correct, yes. And the police officers.
So we only have...
One number?
One number or...
No, one number, yes. 578.
Francine, can you mute your phone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we only have four people who, poll workers through your office who work for that two, is that 290? So that's just 290 for the entire, because we're only having one election, right? So that's for the entire day?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it. And that's obviously without, if we have to have early voting again, we don't know what the future will bring.
Would that increase the cost for the poll workers?
It would be if we have early voting in person, yes.
Okay.
So obviously, Madam Clerk, this account fluctuates. Is it on a two-year cycle that fluctuates? Or is this line item for like the state election, for state primers and stuff?
Correct.
So is this, so when we decrease, this is, well, but my point is, does this account for potential state elections that occur? I mean, I'm just concerned that, I never want to have extra money anywhere sitting around, but the fluctuations that you have is how do you budget and say in a year that monies might be tight and it's a national election?
Right.
So how do you, how do you do that?
So we, I count out the elections that we have in the fiscal year period, with the exception if there's ever a special election required by the state, or actually, there's nothing in the budget for that. However, if, so this year, we had, for this fiscal year, we started out in June, or July of last year, we had September and November, and then this one in June. So that was three elections last year.
Right.
This year is only one.
And that's my point. So then when you have those ebbs and flows, I've never been here during those years that a town may be so tight on their budget that, how do you account for, the money to account for additional elections?
I don't account for an additional election. That's the thing. We don't, we just budget for...
Do you understand my point? I'm just talking long range when you have those fluctuations, because it's always easier to, it's always easy to have too much and then transfer at the end of the year, based on what is the four-year cycle on elections say? based on, what is the four-year cycle on elections say?
Right.
Do you understand my point?
Right, right.
And so this year, it's, okay, we're only budgeting for one election.
Right, because that's all we have in this.
But that's all we have. Next year, we don't have the finances to be able to afford it, say.
But.
How do you, how do you, how do you account for that? I mean, it's, it's more for a longer discussion later on, but.
Right.
I, I just, you never want to be in the point that it's always harder to put money in than it is to take it out. So, not that I'm looking to increase it, I just food for thought later on.
Yeah, but it's never, it's always, I mean, and not say, but that's been the practice where we just budget for the amount of elections that are in that fiscal year.
Council Ryan?
I mean, we could, just kind of going off your thought process here, if for some reason, say, a senator died, right, and we have to hold a whole new election for to replace that seat, we could just dip into town council reserves.
Right.
And use it that way. I mean, she can't predict when we're going to have special elections, right, there's only so much we can do. So it's kind of like a give and take. This is one of those places where sometimes, maybe every once in a great while, you'll have to increase it just because of a special election, but it's pretty, it's only like 45 grand, so it's not like it's going to break us.
What I'm saying, we spent 86,000 this year. Granted, we had a lot of early voting and everything. Say you take even out, what's the, what's the usual four-year election?
It's usually just three, three.
Or three, on that, on that presidential.
That's probably.
No, we don't have to have this discussion today, but what I'm saying is, if it's 70,000, we drop it down to 50, and I get it, that's fine. Move on. Any other discussions? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we having early voting this year for the town council meeting, our local elections?
Yes, I've suggested it to the chairman that we would have early voting in person, only due to the fact that we've moved the polling locations, and we could have, we can't have it prior to 10 days, and it has to be done by the fourth day. So I suggested to the chairman to have it May 27th and 28th, then start again June 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and then the elections on the 8th.
And that, and you're still okay with this budget here, even though you're planning on this early voting?
No, no, because this is for next year's.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. I got you.
And we did discuss it at the last meeting, I did announce it. Any other discussion? Roll call, Council Steves? Oh, my, I, did you?
No, I, she answered my question.
Okay. Sorry.
No, very good.
I'm still getting used to being here in the dais as opposed to being on a remote where I can just look at a screen. Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shay?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Item 10, review of the fiscal year 2022 cable budget in the amount of $213,755. Entertained motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Council, Ms. Clements, is that good?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Town Manager? Jim?
I have Mr. Cosgrove coming up.
Yeah, personnel is one, sorry about that, 129, 487. They did have the longevity pay. Fringe benefits were 37,650 for this year. Data processing was 4,500. Telephone is pretty much stays the same, it went up a small bit, $700. And advertising and promotion is going to be 5,000. Miscellaneous materials, 100.
What? 10,000.
Legal would be five, 5,000. And. Legal, and then transfers to the general fund, 20,318. That went up 2%. That's basically our rent, so to speak.
Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask about the huge increase. There's almost a nearly 20% increase in fringe benefits.
Can you speak into the mic a little more? It's really kind of hot, yeah.
There's an increase of 20%, or nearly 20% in the fringe benefits, and I wanted to know why.
That was on, that was under one, what line item?
That's 001159517400.
51700. Did somebody take health insurance?
Yep, right in the front, Karen has it, Karen has the answer.
Karen?
At the, at the time when we did the budget for the department, we budgeted on the high side because we weren't sure where we were coming in with the, with the health insurance. So this is a line item that actually we can go in and redo the budget on, and we could probably reduce this.
Do you know how much?
No.
You have to recalculate it?
Yes, we have to recalculate it.
So will you have it, is, when would, could you have that recalculated? Could that be ready for the full council meeting for the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I only had one other question. I have a feeling I know the answer, but I'm going to ask anyway, 50% reduction in other legal, is that because you guys are going to be finishing up the contract so you don't need that huge amount?
It's real.
So we will be spending more this year, and then less the following year. Hopefully, right? Hopefully, things will be ironed out.
That's, that's all my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Harnoy?
Mr. Cosgrove, can you just explain the advertising and promotion is a new line item at the 5,000? Can you just give the, the committee a little bit of an explanation as to what you'll spend the $5,000 on?
Yeah, some of the, some of the legal, we're going to move into advertising. We're going to try to promote the channel through various, like possibly some banners, some signs, and things like that, so people can try to boost viewership for the channel.
Any other discussion? Ms. Town Manager, any questions? Council Steves, any questions?
I was going to say, I think COVID did a great job of boosting the profile, because I think a lot more people tune into Southbridge Cable to watch it for Zoom meetings as well as watching the meetings online. But I do think that it helps them, and it helps with our assessment of need to demonstrate that, you know, we're, the promotional video that they created for the cable hearing was really nice, and I don't know if you've seen it, maybe we could find a place to put it out there for, I know you emailed it to me, but they did a really good job showing the amount of programming that they put together on the budget that they have, and that was part of the assessment of needs to demonstrate, to charter, how much they produce here. But I do think they do a great job of producing shows and putting out a quantity and quality of programming. And, you know, as someone new to the town, I learned a lot about the town by watching those programs. You can learn about the fire station, you can learn about quite a variety of things out there. So I think people turned, tuned in because of COVID, but I think that they can continue to promote the channel, and it also demonstrates to charter that they have to keep up supporting local cable.
Yeah, and certainly cable was good, very beneficial to us on the emergency operations center by coming down when we do our, when we were doing some of the Facebook Live events that not only were we taping on Facebook, but cable was coming to get the information out to the public. So we certainly appreciate that. Did you have something, Ms. Harnoy?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to remind everybody that the amount of this budget is covered fully by the revenues from the cable contract.
Okay, so nothing comes out of town budget?
Correct.
Ms.
That was my question.
Okay. See, look at that, they had the answers before you even asked, huh?
I'm one question slow tonight. If I was, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Clements.
So the other thing, too, as far as promotional goes, they really want to do more outreach and let people know that this cable access program is, is available to all of the community. They can, the community at large can provide and produce their own types of promotion, segments, material, whatever that comes through, and it can be aired on our cable access channel. So this isn't, this is community television. It's not just something that they can do, that, you know, Max and, and Jim and the others can do, Bill and Mark. It's something the whole community can get involved in. So they definitely need to promote more out there in that, in that respect. So hopefully, people listening are saying, oh, that's kind of cool, maybe we can get something that we've created out there for the public to view, as long as it complies with all the FCC regulations, it's not a problem. But anyway, so we just need more interest and more people tuning into cable access.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? You all set, Council Steves?
I am, thanks.
Thank you. Roll call, Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
No.
Councillor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shay?
Yes.
Motion carries four oh one, with Council Marquetti opposed. Agenda item 11, review of the fiscal year 2022 town council reserve budget in the amount of $100,000, and entertain motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions on this one? Does everybody understand the council reserve?
No, I don't. I was going to ask about that. I never, I never, I've never understood what council reserve is, so just, if you could just give me a.
I can, but I'll defer to, because it's, because it's, go ahead.
The town council reserve is for unforeseen extraordinary items that might come up during the year that we can transfer from a place that, and that goes for consideration to the council. Something that we didn't foresee when we put the budget together.
And have we ever come close to $100,000?
Sometimes.
I think in some years we have.
And I just might add, last year, we got reimbursed from Bay Path, we put that money into council reserves, and then we used some of that out of council reserves to go to COVID-19 for those money. So if this, you know, snow and ice goes over, we can transfer some money from snow and ice, so it just, or unforeseen, whatever it may be. It's one of those things that we never. It's just a, a safety valve, but the council has total control over it, so we're the ones that determine whether it goes out, if not, it goes back to free cash and is certified.
Thank you.
Council Ryan?
I was, to, yeah, one thing I know, it's very common practice, is at the end of the year, if you have any other expenses that have come up that can't be covered in a department's budget, if there's leftover in council reserves, that will be one of the first ones that council will use to drain, to pay off those bills instead of letting them transfer over into the next fiscal year.
Council, Ms. Harnoy?
I just wanted to give an example, I was just trying to think back, do you remember the time, several years back, where we had some arsons that were occurring in town? And we had a lot of extra overtime for fire and police. I believe this is, you know, that's an example of something that we went to for the town council reserve.
Just to say discretionary savings account on the, on the council side, so again, at council's discretion, so it puts a lot of control over these funds with, directly with council, not, you know, some other vote that has to be, you know, you guys get to decide what happens to you.
So i.e. if the police department was fully staffed for the whole year, and they had something with the salary, and they had to come to us, we would have monies there? So, rather than go into a stabilization.
Right.
Account or something like that. Council Steves, you all set?
Yep, I am.
Okay, roll call, Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shay?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Agenda item 12, review of the fiscal year 2022 personnel budget in the amount of $4,296,935. Entertained motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of the items in here are, are retirement assessment, there's also sick and vacation buyback, Medicare obligations. So some of this is, again, non-discretionary. I believe Ms. Harnoy may have some additional information she could add if there are any questions.
Karen?
If I could, in the, especially in the sick vacation buyback, there are several departments that came forward with employees that are anticipated to retire in fiscal year 22. That's why there's that large increase to the 66,534.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call. Council Steves, you all set?
Yes.
Councillor Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shay?
Obstain.
Okay. So we'll go four oh one, with Ms. Shay abstaining. Agenda item 13, review of the fiscal year 2022 group health and life insurance budget in the amount of $4,129,589. Entertained motion to vote to submit to council as presented. presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Counsel Ryan, Counsel, Ms. Clements. Ms. Town Manager?
I believe Mr. Wadzki is here this evening to address the next two items.
Thank you.
You have to speak into the mic, Melissa, because we cannot hear you at all.
Health insurance, right? This is what we're talking about?
This group health and life, yes.
So the funding here is essentially level service. That has to do with the fact that we had a nominal increase in insurances and we've had a slight decline in enrollment in our benefits. So therefore, we felt it was prudent to move forward with level service budget and not a... And that's what it is. So if you have any questions?
Questions?
The rate did go up by 2.46%. However, we were able to get a slight reduction on that down to 1.95% with our ability to offer yet another insurance benefit for eyeglasses that is optional and fully funded by the employee, but is another offering that I know I appreciate having. So I'm sure I'll be enrolling in that.
Ms. Town Manager?
I neglected to mention those things. Those were in the budget memo, but we were looking or forewarned that we could get a rate increase significantly higher up into the six, close to seven percent in that the average rates for a lot of members of the Maya Trust was closer to 2.8. So the 2.4 was a great windfall for us and then the ability to have these additional offerings that allowed us to save that additional half a percent was a great benefit to the town and to our employees.
Thank you. I did have an opportunity at the EHS meeting. I heard that Bay Path had the same type of savings as well. So it's good win-win for all towns and thanks. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, you talked about the town side and how the increase wasn't as high. Could you expound...
It's the same. It's the same for school.
Yeah. So the reason why it dropped by 1.91 was because they saved?
No, it just, that's just, you know, moving of enrollment, you know, who's enrolled.
So there was a declining of enrollment within the school side?
Yeah, we're just trying to get a good handle on the count. I have moved, I had moved, when I got here, the way that the insurance was broken out was that all retirees are moved on to the town side. And I found that difficult to manage when reporting to the school for, you know, the true cost of their employees. So I created a fourth bill that had school retirees and town retirees. And we have been trying to manage, because I don't have the history of being here in Southbridge for a long time, I don't recognize the names the way my predecessor did. So I believe there's a declining enrollment at the school, but we are still trying to manage getting all the school retirees onto the school side budget. So they've had less enrollees in the past couple of years, but we don't know. They have, they have high turnover there still. So it can fluctuate by 50 people at the beginning of the school year, you know, people coming and going. So it's just, it's sort of a guess.
Okay.
We do budget it this way, but when we do the net school spending report, we report actuals and not the estimates. And that's why it's all inclusive in one budget. In the past, we pay the bill as to what plan people enrolled in, but I could change my plan tomorrow. You know, I could go from the HMO to the PPO or vice versa. So that's hard to, it's hard enough to guess who enrolls, but even more hard to guess what they choose to enroll in.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I was just thinking, although I appreciate the fact that this current year has gone, some of these items have gone down a little bit this current year. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are getting a somewhat better rate than the average. The total increase, I decided to take a look at the numbers on some of these items from back when I started on council. In this case, the insurance line for both town hall and schools has gone up a combined $1.2 million if I go on council.
It's true, health insurance.
There is a killing.
It's gone, that's pretty much nationwide. The cost of health insurance has changed dramatically over the past 10 years. Just, and it's something that all municipalities are always trying to manage. You know, how do we offer good benefits to our employees while maintaining low costs? And I believe it came up in a gen gov meeting earlier about plan design. You know, we modified the plan design several years ago. We still have a fairly rich plan. And so we'd like to maintain that. And as long as we don't have skyrocketing rates year to year, then we hope to maintain that.
And I think we should be providing as much coverage as we can for our employees. But I think here again, and I know I've marked this up in the past, is that yet again, this is yet another argument for single payer. We're getting robbed by these people.
Can't say that I disagree with you, Mr. Steve, but we don't have control over that.
Anything further?
They're putting pressure on our Congress.
Anything further?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes, unfortunately.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Agenda I am 14, review the fiscal year 2022 general insurance budget in the amount of, I'm on the right one, right? $755,000 and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there has been significant increases in this line item. Unfortunately, the town has experienced several large losses, which is a driver of our insurance rates, both in health insurance and liability insurance. This year, we did well on the health insurance side, not so well on the liability side. The council may remember that we had a serious issue with a fire truck right before I arrived here. We are, those losses show in the insurance company. And we will always have that sort of, they lost money on us and it's reflected
They want it back.
It's reflected a little bit in the rates. Also, we had a pretty large loss at the school recently. And that too impacts our liability. I believe that the unemployment is up. Unemployment is a little harder to manage this year. And while the town has maintained most of its employees, some employees who have chosen to leave or, you know, they might move on to other jobs, but then during the pandemic, if they lost their job, we're part of their history and we've been, we've been responsible for those unemployment wages. So, and people are unfortunately staying on unemployment longer. So there is a little bump in that. I hope that we won't have to use it, but it's hard to say, given the employment rate locally. And while we are not laying off, that doesn't mean that we don't see those claims. And we have had a lot of fraudulent claims here in the town of Southbridge, like many employers throughout the country. We are managing that, but it does take a little longer for us to manage the bill because we have to say, oh, you know, use myself as an example, Melissa, on the unemployment bill this week, we're not going to pay that port. And it might take several months for us to get the credit back. So it's, we're a little behind on managing where we are with that because we want to make sure that we get all the credits that we're entitled to and that we've notified the employees of how to protect themselves with unemployment. So those are the big drivers of that budget, I believe.
What's the deductible $30,000 increase? The deductible?
Oh, okay. So I changed the deductible on the, on the liability insurance to try and hold costs down. So we used to have a really low deductible of $2,500 and we're going to move to $10,000 for large losses and self-insure for smaller damages. So to drive down our insurance rates.
Okay. Makes sense.
Definitely. A lot of companies do that in generals.
Yeah. Okay.
And Melissa and I did talk about this because the previous community I had come from and others had had a higher deductible. And a lot of those things, you know, you would probably replace on your own, but to file a claim, it just drives the rates up.
Okay.
I will say that we did do a project the last couple of months to look at our fleet schedule. I believe the manager mentioned that earlier today. And we had a large group of items on what was called unclassified, which is specialized equipment typically in the fire and police station of lower value. Unfortunately, we had big numbers on our insurance bill that, that we couldn't substantiate. So we did an audit, working with police, fire, and DPW to say, what, what do you believe is in this? And we've brought those limits that I believe it was a total of over $200,000 unclassified things. All of that has been brought down to $30,000 per department. And then if there is items such as the specialized equipment in fire in particular, anything that's portable, that can be moved, jaws of life, breathing apparatus, those have been itemized. So we're still working through how much we will save by not over ensuring unclassified items and what the true cost of ensuring the value of the specialized equipment. The other interesting part of that is that the, the unclassified equipment has a limit of $2,500 and some of that unclassified equipment that was not itemized is worth significantly more than that. Should we ever have had to make a claim against it, we would have been unhappy with the result.
Well, personally, I thank you being in the insurance business. I thank you for doing that kind of work to make sure that we know, one, what all our assets are and make sure that they're properly classified and accounted for.
I have to say, I have to commend Joe Hewlick. He came over almost immediately when I sent out the email with a very itemized list that I'm still working through with the insurance agent. She is not too pleased with me right now. She's like, there's a lot of stuff. And she goes, we don't need all of it. I said, I know, but I'm going to let you help me comb through it.
Ms. Shea?
Are you working with the school department too? Because I always wonder how many trucks that we actually have.
So we have all of the titles of all, all of the vehicles that are insured are held in my office and that list is maintained by Nancy Jones, who is our insurance specialist.
Okay.
So including school department.
Okay. Any other questions? See no? Roll call. Oh, do you have a question, Counsel Steves?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. I was curious about the unemployment line. I know you mentioned, mentioned a bit about it a few minutes ago. Do you actually foresee spending up to $50,000 on unemployment this year? That seems like a huge jump since the last one was only 20 grand.
No, our insurance, unemployment's had gone up, but like I said, it's really hard for us to manage right now based on the amount of claims coming through, a lot of which are fraudulent. We have seen more sustained claims than in past years. I believe, we looked at it a few months ago. We believe that we can get through this year. And if that's the case, then maybe we won't see a change next year. But I, the bills, like I said, we have a lot of claims on there and people who normally wouldn't be on our insurance claims are, not because of our unemployment or our, but because people who leave and then seek other opportunities are then subsequently losing their jobs because of the COVID crisis. And we hold their experience and the liability for 18 months, look back on that employee.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that. And also, do you, do you foresee seeing a spike in unemployment, especially on the school side, when, when a lot of these COVID employees get released?
If they lay them off, yes, I do.
But I don't, I don't know how their contract...
I believe the school department appropriates...
Hold on, Counsel Steves. Hold on, she's answering the question.
But I believe the school department appropriates for their own losses.
Did you get that?
Okay. I did. Thanks.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Clements?
Thanks. I was going to remind Counsel Steves back in when the school was doing a lot of layoffs a number of years ago, or there were firings and changes and people were collecting. And we learned that the look back, the, you know, two years or whatever that we were responsible, even if they went and got another job and then they left that job, we were stuck with them. And there was exorbitant unemployment that we were, and that's, the budget was a disaster and everything was just, it was complete chaos really in terms of the numbers. It was just, yeah. So I'd be concerned now too that that could happen again with the school a bit. But, and you say that they appropriate for their own, but we appropriate. You know, it comes from a part of it, I granted. Yeah.
But I don't think it's reflected in, in the number here, I guess is my point.
Right. No, 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 I understood that. But ultimately, the town does have responsibility to the school. So when it's bad, it's bad.
Another reason I keep advocating for transparency in the school department's budget. I'd like to see a line item budget just like these.
Do they not promote that to the school committee?
Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
No.
See no? Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item 15, review fiscal year 2022 administration budget in the amount of $440,000 and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll go with Counsel Steve, I'll go with Counsel Steves on that one. It was a tally. Okay. Ms. Town Manager?
Administration budget, $400,000. From my review, when I met with Ms. Harnoy's, these are our general expenses for our utilities. And as you can see, there's been a slight decrease year over year. She may have more to add. We're on the actual line items, but that's the budget we're presenting.
Where would that be located in this book? Where is it put by?
You have to, you have to go back a little bit.
Go back a little bit.
They gave that out halfway through when I went.
All right. Go ahead. Karen, do you want to go through these?
Okay. So the natural gas, I took a look at that and it was budgeted at $80,000. The town hall has changed over within the last couple of years from oil into natural gas. And we're getting favorable changes on that. So I feel comfortable being able to reduce that budget from 80,000 to 65,000. For the heating fuel, all that we did there was we moved it down a little bit further. The only facility now that's using oil heat is the DPW. So I put it underneath down under the heating fuel. That's the, that's for the DPW. So they can budget properly. The property management, that's like for the, for the lease, like for the parking lot that we have over here, that's level funded at 12,000. The property repair management and demo, that's level funded at 50,000. The audit, we had locked in a rate on that. That's level funded at 36,000. Telephone is level funded. Postage, we did go up a little bit because the postage price has increased. The, the copy machine costs, I believe that we're going to be renegotiating that. So I think it was recommended from the town manager's office that we increase that slightly to 17,000. And the fuel and lubricants is level funded at 135,000. So actually, the, the whole total budget has gone down 2.4% to 440,000.
Any questions? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I just had a couple. One further down, the heating fuel line item that got moved down, that was the third, it's under, it's like the third or fourth page with a bunch of those 0% increases. It goes to town manager recommendation 35,000, 0% in change. So is that just because it was a new line item or?
Well, what we do in these set of the administration accounts is we actually put the budget in one account and then we break out the expenses into the different departments. So what you'll see is the budget's usually up above and then we break it down between the different departments. And you kind of have to add all of those up to see, or you can summarize on our financial system.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. One is going back to the property maintenance and demolition. How much have we done as far as demolition of derelict properties this year? And because we keep kicking money into this account and we gave that, and this is, if it's not a separate account, we've also given the health department a huge sum of money over the years to demolish properties. And it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of it getting done. How much got done this year?
Do you have any answer for that?
I'm not, I don't, I don't think that we've taken anything down within this last fiscal year. Probably we're in a standstill because of COVID. Though I do believe that Mr. Pelletier did say, that, yeah, that was because of an emergency. There was, there was a fire and we did, we did take a, a house down. But I think, I think Mr. Pelletier did say that there was something coming up shortly, that he's going to be resuming some of that. But just to let you know, under this property repair, maintenance and demo, and you can see in fiscal year 21 that we have very high costs in there. We'll be using some of that to front the money for the cleaning for the different facilities during the COVID. And we were getting reimbursed afterwards back from the CARES Act and from FEMA.
Okay.
I missed, Mr. Pelletier's thing, but I would surmise that the court's being closed probably put a lot of hold on a lot of that information or the process. So there's probably a lot of hold until the courts open back up. But...
That was, that was the general summation that I gave at the meeting.
Yeah. And there's a moratorium on evictions and things as well. So that can slow down the process.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counsel Steves.
And the other thing I just wanted to find out to refer back to the, when I started on council, this, this line item is down by $300,000, $340,000, which is good.
Okay. Any other discussion? See no? Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. I'm sorry, I have no sheet to rotate votes. So I hope you don't mind. I'm just going by the list. Hope nobody took offense to that.
It's fine.
You know, I just thought that.
I'm going to go home and cry.
Agenda I am 16, review the fiscal year 2022 data processing budget in the amount of $239,000 and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Ryan, Counsel Steves, and who's this, Mr. Town Manager? Just going to Will?
Yes, he's, as I noted earlier, he is also our IT manager.
Thank you. Mr. Knoy, welcome back. I would have, I would have entertained a motion to move it so you could have gone back downstairs to work. But you love watching us do this deliberation.
I had already asked him if he wanted me to advance that.
I have another one on articles as well. So, you know, as you can see by one of my staff signing in, you're, you're the most popular game in town. Who could miss it? Anyway, so, give me a second. So the data processing budget, this year, this budget has increased by $38,040 from last year to a total of 239,000. The biggest part of this increase, actually, give me a moment. Please note that prior budgets had been level funded for several years. In fact, when I took over and became IT manager in 2006, this budget was $240,000. I was able to reduce it steadily to where it is now while at the same time modernizing our infrastructure and cycling things out to the recommended life cycles. This year's increase is due to several factors. The biggest one is in the Munis project, there, the way we funded Munis was the first two years, the school paid the, the majority of the cost using some grants from the state. And the agreement was in the third year, the town would pick up the annual maintenance of it, which we have this year. In addition though, there's a module that is coming into place for the first time that the school ordered initially, and it's, it's called the Executime. And it's used to manage employees' time and it, it's an HR module that, that's comprehensive. And they should be implementing it this year. It's the first year we're using it. Let's see. In addition, managed, managed services costs have increased due to additional uses in email accounts that have been added to the system as well as a contractual increase. By the email, as you know, a year ago, we went, we moved our email from an internal exchange server to Microsoft in the cloud. And with that, you pay as you go, every user, every user, email user pays a monthly charge for the email as well for filtering services and so forth. And now, as many of you know, we have moved, most of our town employee, all of our town employees have a town email account, as well as some elected and public officials as well. And those all cost. Additionally, the keyless entry system that was formally paid in an outside budget is now included in this, in this... now included in this budget as well. So that's an overview.
So I have a quick question. The HR module, is that going to be used on the town municipal side as well? That's being purchased? Or is that going to be an additional fee if we go down that road?
I don't think, I'm not sure about the additional fee. It's, we're not ready to implement it yet. I don't know, but I don't know if it's an additional fee. The cost is something we contracted three years ago. Karen, do you recall if it's an additional fee if the town uses it?
I don't believe it is. I believe this recovered the town and the school.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Counsel Marquetti?
I was just curious if we're going to receive any COVID money for some of this, because we did have to go to go-to meeting, because we could not meet here.
I couldn't quite hear everything there. Could you repeat that, please?
I was curious if we're going to be receiving any COVID money for some of this, to offset some of this, because we did have to go to go-to meeting, because we could not hold meetings here anymore. So that was a cost, and I was just wondering, are we going to receive any, do you think we're going to receive any COVID money for this, any of this?
The go-to meeting is a relatively low expense in the scheme of it all.
All right.
I don't believe we are. I don't believe we are.
Ms. Harris?
We actually have received reimbursement for some of the, for the go-to meetings.
We did?
Yes.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that.
We also put in for the upgrade of our webpage, too. So, and that was covered by the CARES Act money. We've yet to implement, we were waiting for Munis to go live and get through some of the kinks before I agreed to a start date with the folks at Civic Plus. So we were trying to leverage everything we could with the CARES money and things.
So the cost of the improved website is not included in the budget. However, there is a slight additional cost of the annual support for that website, but a little less than $1,000, I believe.
Is that in this budget?
Yes, it is.
And I know, as a council, we've explored the possibility of, at future times, of using remote participation. So if go-to meeting is included in this budget, once we get through the COVID environment, we would have the option of continuing go-to meeting for a remote participation for any board or commission?
It is included in the budget here. It is included in the budget here, because I don't know when this is all going to lighten up. And however, as you know, up here, we're doing a hybrid meeting, which required a
Right.
Quite a bit of investment in, not really in money so much, but in intellectual capital and the equipment they already have to facilitate it. In the other boards and meetings, to do something like this would require, you know, a similar type system. I mean, we're not talking about remote meetings with laptops. We're talking about
No.
Hybrid.
That's a different discussion that we've had on the side of another meeting room, possibly for that remote. I just want to say, as long as we have that captured in here for future use, it's a possibility.
The go-to meeting stuff is included in here for this year, yes.
Because personally, I like the opportunity that people can participate, such as Counsel Steves, who not feeling well, able to stay home but participate fully. But we have to develop a whole policy around that at a future time. Counsel Ryan?
Just kind of continue off your thoughts there, Mr. Chair. How much does it actually cost the town annually for the go-to meeting service?
Well, so what we have is, we have a, we bought, we purchased a corporate account with five licenses. And with the five licenses, you're allowed to have 30, up to 35 flex accounts. So for, and I think we're using about 20 to 25 of those flex accounts. The five main licenses, we have a fee, a fixed fee that we pay for. The flex accounts, it's how often these people have meetings and how often it goes over. I can estimate, for the year, we'll probably use about $2,000 worth, a little bit more. But it all depends on those flex accounts.
No, just going off the chairman's thoughts, I think that if it's only two grand, I think that's something for the council to discuss going forward after COVID. So that way, if people are feeling sick, or if people are away and still want to be able to participate in a meeting, say they're on vacation, and they still want to do their duty because they were elected to it, and they want to participate in the meeting, they can participate.
Or they're in Mexico enjoying the sun and the fun.
So I think that's something going forward. I would be interested in looking at if it's only two grand to the town.
Oh, no, absolutely.
But not only the board members themselves, but the public. And I think that's what's really changed the way we do things. And there will be a lot of things that changed during COVID that we carry on. And if you read a lot of literature, I think the public has grown accustomed to some of the things they've done. Not everybody likes everything they've experienced in COVID. We all know that. But a lot of people that might not otherwise be able to come down to a meeting, because maybe they have children, or they're taking their caregivers, or whatever the case, they can now participate. And if we can extend that benefit for a minimal cost to the citizens as well as the officials, I think it's a win-win for everybody, to Counsel Ryan's point, yep.
So I've always had a bit of a thing on this, because I thought public meeting is important. But, and I understand, it's worked mostly great, you know, that's all wonderful. And as a community, you could take a vote so that all your, but you, all your committees and boards would have to be afforded the same
Right.
ability. And the problem with that has always been, how does that, right now, of course, the governor's given a lot of leeway. Okay, you can all just set up a Zoom meeting. Nobody has to be anywhere public, you know, you just be in your own whatever, and that's supposed to be good enough. And they don't know who's influencing who or what. However, just because you all take that vote, unless something is legally allowed for open meeting law-wise, or, you know, there's a change in government rules and regulations that they're going to continue it, you can take all the votes you want, and then you would have to make it happen the way they originally said, which was difficult. The way they're letting you do it now is not difficult.
Right.
But if they don't change in Boston and the state, then you cannot, I think it would still be, it wouldn't be feasible under the parameters of the way they set it down originally for remote meetings. Everybody had to be able to hear, you had to be able to prove, there was just a whole lot of rules, and it had to apply to every single committee or group.
Right, yeah.
You had to afford that authority to them, except for people with disabilities that had a whole different, you know, they could be allowed to do remote participation because of the, you know, the circumstance under different auspices. But anyway, just saying, I don't disagree that there have been many positives to the situation. It's just not as easy as saying, oh, we love it, let's keep doing it. It's going to take an act of the state, Ray, in order for it to be allowed to continue.
No, it's duly noted. I mean.
Yeah. I'm just pointing it out. For the people who don't understand that, maybe at home.
I don't want to get too far afield, you know.
And it's a budget meeting.
We're here for that budget. But I do participate regularly, almost weekly, with the MMA briefings, where we have Lieutenant Governor on with us and a lot of department heads. And this is a topic of conversation, and it's brought up at least once, if not twice every meeting by some manager or elected official. Please allow us to do this going forward. So I know it's on their radar screen. You also read that the state wants to allow some of their employees to work from home, because they see cost savings. So they see the advantages of all of these. So it wouldn't shock me at all if they take your advice and go ahead and codify these things.
Figure the 44 pages of open meeting law, that we have been memor, well, some of us.
Let it be stricken from the record. Counsel Ryan?
I could just, I can totally see how this is something that would be adopted by the state legislature. I'm sure it makes their lives a lot easier to only be able to have to participate at a, you know, committee meeting, and not having to go to Boston, being able to stay home in their, if they can, if they need to, within their own home district. So I can see Boston quickly adapting to this, especially for their most far-out representatives.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just want to say, reiterate this. So the $2,000 go-to meeting is, it's working now because of the COVID situation. If we had to do that, it would be a significant expense, because we'd have to retrofit a bunch of these meeting rooms for, you know, if we go back to the pre-rules, it would be significant if they, you know, if they use this experience, it would be, you know, probably a little bit more variable rules, a little easier to meet. But it's, the $2,000, it wouldn't cover that. I just want to say that.
No, I think that's understandable, but the technology itself is available, and then whatever rooms that we retrofit, either through a cable access, capital, or wherever it is. And duly noted, you want participation, and I think it's great that we're all here. But the ability for somebody to be remote, not even necessarily the public body person, but a person that we need to talk to, and rather than pay them travel time to come all the way here to sit for four hours until they get to the agenda item, the ability for them to just pop on a screen and say, hey, I'm participating. Or the public also, if they wish to participate, if they, you want as many people here as possible. I just, I throw it out there, that's all. That's a long way down the road for any other discussion. Any other discussion on this? Seen none. Roll call. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea, Clemmons?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're going over to Agenda Item 18. Review the fiscal year 2022 articles budget in the amount of $88,250. Entertained motion to vote to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Counsel Ryan and Ms. Clemmons? Mr. Town Manager?
Is that in the back, towards the back?
Yep, it's in the back.
So as you can see, there's been a reduction in the year-over-year budget. I've got to get to the front page here. We could take section by section if you have any questions.
Do you want me to go first?
Or Ms. Harnoy's is offered to go through there.
Okay. These special articles work a little bit differently. They can be carried over from year to year. As an example, the, some of them work that way, some of them work annually. So we'll go down to the ambulance billing. That's an annual appropriation for the, for UMass Medical, who helps us with our, I'm sorry, that's ComStar, that helps us with our ambulance billing. The Medicaid, again, that's UMass, that helps us with our Medicaid billing. So those are annuals. The OPEB study is one of those that I carry over from year to year. I only need $250 to add to the balance. That's going to be left over in order to do the other post-employment benefits update for the coming year. The revale, Will can explain that a little bit, but that's one of those that I think what Counsel Jovan was talking about. We actually budget $35,000 per year, and the actual full valuation is done, I believe it's every five years now, so that there won't be dips, dips in that. We just do $35,000 a year. Is Will still here? Did you want to say anything further?
Yeah, so in the Community Compact, no, Community Modernization Act a few years ago, we used to have to do a revale every three years, and the cost was very, very significant. And we would use this methodology, and we would budget approximately $45,000 a year. Over the last five years, the state has moved to, once every five years, you have to do that revale. But they make the annual requirements, the annual updates and reporting requirements, and the things you have to do, much more stringent. So in the once every five years, it's approximately $100,000 for the full revale. But in the annual years, it's approximately $15,000 to $20,000. We do a lot of the work in-house. But when it comes to the personal property, we have a consultant who assists us. In fact, you have to do actually appraisals on some of the, on some of the utilities. I mean, you have, so you have to be qualified to do appraisals on utilities. I'm not, and I can't think of many assessors who are. So each year, each year, we use a smaller fraction of that, but once every five years, it's a very significant amount. Sometimes the work goes before June, before June 30th. So the following year, it doesn't look like very much in July, simply a matter of timing. Other years, you do the work in July, and that year pops up high. So that accounts for the little dips and ebbs and flows.
Okay. I'll continue on that. To continue down to the road improvement fund. Now, you see that it's zero for fiscal year 22, whereas we put $200,000 in for fiscal year 21. But when we come to the debt budget, we're going to have $300,000 in there. It's going to be used to pay off the debt, the money that we're going to borrow for the road improvements. So that shows the extra $100,000 commitment by the town for that fund. So the total for the special articles, $88,250, which is down 69.8%.
So the anti-drug, so is there still money in anti-drug, or does that get zero-funded? Or does that, or do these revised budget numbers stay? I'm just confused on that.
Yes. At the end of a fiscal year, I go through the balances in these special articles, and I look to see if the program or the purpose is still continuing.
Okay.
If it is, then we carry it forward. Like the anti-drug, that's how much that was left over from the original appropriation.
Okay.
And the deputy chief did contact me to ask me how much was left in the fund.
Okay. So, so while there's no increase or anything, that money stays in that account?
Yes, unless, unless for whatever reason, we're not going to continue that program. And then I would close it out. Another example would be the cancer screenings for the fire department down below.
Right.
We had a revised budget for the 1908. We've used some this year.
Right.
It depends how many employees that he can get in. We'll carry that over to the next year, until everybody has had their screening.
Okay. And then were we doing on that cancer screening, though, were we going to keep that at a certain item, or is that going into his regular budget for the cancer screening? You know, where we had the re-evaluation of those cancer screenings?
I believe that once everybody has had an initial screening, then we'll have to reevaluate if we want to put in just so much per year.
Okay.
So then we can keep, keep going with that. You don't mind, I just want to point out in here, because it was brought up earlier about the demolition. You can see the demolition account that was approved back in 2016.
Right.
We still have a balance of $181,500. That's part of the, I think, approximately half a million that we still have set aside for the demolition of buildings. This is part of it.
Do we have half? Or, we transferred a whole bunch last year to stabilization on one of those accounts.
Okay, so maybe it's down a little bit.
I thought we closed one out to stabilization, and then we kept two.
Yeah. I know, we at least have this much, and I think that there's maybe one or two others.
Yeah. I know we had that huge conversation last year, because it hadn't been used, and we moved it, a certain amount, but left some for demolition.
Yep. And then you'll, one last thing. Then you'll also see down here where it says stormwater.
Yeah.
We had appropriated $50,000 towards the stormwater initiative. So that amount will be carried over
Carried over.
To be used in the future.
Okay. All right. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, actually talking about the anti-drug program, has, one, has it been meeting, or has it any?
Yes, it has been meeting. I'm a member of that right now.
Okay.
So it is meeting. I think they had, I was driving today on the road, so I think they had a meeting maybe yesterday. But they are meeting, Deputy Chief Dingey's heading that up now. It used to be the Town Manager's office, but now that got transferred to Deputy Chief Dingey. And there's a whole group of, they brought new stakeholders to the table. So that is off and running right now.
I would like to have, if at some point, maybe get a presentation to council from them to see the current work they're doing.
Sure.
I would be interested in knowing.
Okay. But yeah, there's new people involved and all that, so yes. He's doing a good job with it right now. And also tracking the number of opioid deaths and updating the committee on that. And I know this week on the agenda, again, I wasn't able to make it, but they had the middle school nurse part of it. So they had a lot of people from the school department, I think, participate in that roundtable discussion. And they were talking about programming for the upcoming year. Ms. Clemmons?
Yes, thank you. So I guess I'm curious, that was put together as a Town Manager Advisory Committee. It's no longer under the Town Manager, you're saying? Is it a committee? It's being headed up by our deputy chief, which is a town entity. I guess I'm trying to figure out, did you make it a subcommittee? Did council vote on it? Did I miss something?
I did not, but I think, we'll circle back.
Because that's always been a problem in terms of.
I think we can have a conversation about that with the Town Manager. It was transitioned, at least to start, because we're in transition with Town Manager.
No, I understand.
That the former Town Manager briefed Deputy Chief. He kind of put it together, and I know we'll be working with the Town Manager. So we'll get back to you on that. But I understand your point. It was a Town Manager Advisory Committee?
Right, which, which still had hands-on, let's just say, still had hands-on to town money. So I never believed it should be, personally, never believed it should be an advisory committee to the Town Manager when it actually did. You know, just saying. So I'm just curious where it's gotten to. It's a great thing. I'm just saying, let's make sure, and is it covering open meeting law, you know, is it following the rules? That's all, just if we're going to, so that we can all know what's going on.
Yeah, I think Town Manager and I are both on the same wavelength, I think. I'm not going to speak for him, but. not gonna speak for him, but, um, was that appointed by a town council at the time?
No, that was done, that, yeah, we'll talk about that off, off records.
Any other discussion on the articles?
I'm not sure what that, what was that all about?
It's a valid point and something that we'll look at, yeah. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, two things. One is, um, the, the fire department's budget does include fifty-one hundred dollars for this current year for cancer screens.
They're what, I'm sorry?
Oh, so the fire department budget does include fifty-one hundred dollars for this current, this coming fiscal year for cancer screens.
Okay, yeah, I thought they were gonna put it into the regular budget and that amount was to get the whole department screened.
Yep.
Okay.
And the, the other question I had is, um, where do things stand as far as the stormwater issues go? Cause you, there's fifty thousand bucks in this, in this line item from last year and obviously it hasn't been spent yet. Where does that stand?
So I have had some conversations with, uh, DPW Director Blakely, um, Eric Rumsley, our planner, as well as Matt DeJarden. We have to get in our bylaws, I think, by the end of June, so I know the last I checked, uh, Mr. Rumsley was coming up with, he had a set and we had to review those for submission. I could follow up and see if I can get you a better answer, but it's something I've been checking in with them and we're in the process of getting those finalized.
So in that case, am I supposed to put something on the agenda for Gen Gov for like early to mid-June then?
I would estimate something along those timeline and I'll, uh, I'm, I've got a rolling list of to-do things for tomorrow, uh, so.
I'll edit from the left.
I'll save that. Go ahead, Counselor Steves. You all set? Any other discussion?
I, I'll add it to my Gen Gov list too.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Marquette?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Nineteen, review the fifteen, uh, FY two thousand twenty-two debt service budget in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by, uh, Ms. Clements, Mr. Town Manager and whoever else.
So, hey, just gonna, uh, would you like to...
Debt service?
Just, I can, I can kinda start it if you want.
Well, I'm just gonna say, a lot of this is our non-discretional...
I'm just gonna say, under the, um, if you look at the first page of the debt, under the principal on debt and the interest on long-term debt, the last, um, entry is for the roads. So you can see the two hundred and eighty thousand estimated for principal payments and fifty thousand, actually it's fifty-two thousand five hundred estimated for roads. So I know I did say it was, um, three, three hundred thousand, but it looks like it's about three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and that's what's driving the, the, the big increase in the debt.
Okay.
And I'll leave, I'll turn it over to Melissa if there's any other questions or anything else she wants to elaborate on.
Melissa?
So, um, like Karen said...
You gotta speak into the mic again, cause, sorry, it just, we can't hear you.
Pardon me? So, um, like Karen said, there has been some adjustments, um, based on the, um, the road project, moving that out of, um, the capital into the debt, so that does drive the debt up, but it's just really a reorganization of that and, um, I believe we talked about that when we went for the borrowing, um, to, uh, that we, so that we could get a, a, an influx of money, manage that project, pay it down rather quickly, that's a five-year, um, S, uh, five-year payback for, um, one point five million dollar start of the road project. Those numbers on all the new debt in the, um, in the debt schedules are estimates, we haven't done that borrowing yet. Uh, Karen and Michael and I are going to, um, probably do that borrowing in early May. Um, so we are fairly conservative when we estimate, um, debt costs, so my anticipation is that we will do better than I estimate. I try to overestimate the cost, um, and then, uh, hopefully deliver better, cause it, we do it the other way around, it's, it's not good for me. So, um, so hopefully it will be closer to the three hundred thousand. Um, secondly, um, I think that, um, we are gonna try and do some refinancing, the rates, the market is changing a little bit right now, so we had anticipated, um, doing some, um, refinancing early, that may or may not change because the, um, post, uh, the, the taxable market is, um, increasing, the pre-tax market is not, so, um, we may, um, see some savings in those costs and, you know, any excess, of course, would just go back to free cash at the end of the year and be unexpended if we're able to realize, uh, savings in a refinance.
Any questions, comments? Everybody all set? Roll call, Counselor Steves?
Yes, unfortunately.
Counselor Marquette?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item twenty, discuss amendment in Schedule One to approve a non-union two percent increase and other changes effective July first, twenty twenty-one, as presented, improve the minimum wage increase effective one, one, twenty twenty-two, as presented, entertain a motion, recommend council for approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion a second, Counsel Ryan, Citizen Member Clements, Mr. Town Manager?
The schedules that you have before you, um, from my understanding and our review is exactly what the motion says, that we are doing the, uh, two percent cost of living adjustments as well as any adjustments, uh, required by the increases in the minimum wage.
If I can make a comment about, um, Schedule One?
Go ahead.
So you'll notice there that there's, um, we went from minimum, um, step one, step two, step three, to maximum, to step one, step two, step three, step four, step five. And we did that because both our previous accounting system and this accounting system doesn't recognize, um, alphanumeric steps, it only recognizes numbers, so sometimes we would get confused when we were trying to process someone's increase, so I'm just relabeling that, um, merely for the, um, the purpose of, um, consistency and that we, um, make fewer mistakes in our office.
Okay. Karen?
And I just wanted to point out that there's, um, two highlighted changes that are on the Schedule One. Um, on page two, there's a highlight under the S eight adding at the circulation supervisor slash administrative assistant one, though that was discussed at the EHS meeting, that refers to the, to the library employee and, and, uh, in a minute, I'll have, um, Margaret is on so that she can go through, you should have a copy of a, um, an updated job description. And then just, I wanted to point out on page three, that we added to the SS one, we added at minimum wage, the, an intern, because actually we do have an, an intern right now and we might have other interns in the future, we wanted to have the, uh, the position on the, on the schedule for payment.
Okay. Questions, Counselor Steves, or you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Margaret, good evening. We can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Mike.
I know you're green, but we can't hear you. Okay, we'll reconvene. All right, Margaret, I think we have you now. Go ahead.
Thank you very much and I apologize for the confusion about the sound at my end and hopefully it's better right now and that you can hear me. Um, good evening, everybody on the General Government Subcommittee. Um, I'm, uh, hoping that, uh, you will agree with, uh, my proposal to increase, um, or to change the grade that currently exists at the library for an S seven, which is circulation supervisor, to an S eight. Um, the person who's, the, the nature of the work at the library has increased tremendously, the level of responsibility, the amount of activity that's there and supervision. This, um, person in the S seven grade currently supervises five people and, um, I am proposing that, uh, and also has responsibilities for training and, um, the, uh, we've changed our job, uh, our job activity and we no longer use a jobber for, um, ordering our periodical and ordering directly to Amazon, save ourselves a contract fee, uh, tremendous savings. So, um, these are, uh, reasons why I am asking for this change. Effectively, the change would be a dollar thirty, if, sorry, a dollar thirty-one per hour or two thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars seventeen cents, um, for the year. It's a difference in price or a difference in hourly rate from twenty-five eleven to twenty-six forty-two, because the person who's currently serving is at the top of the S seven grade and the proposal is to put her into the next category, which would mean that she'd be at the top of the S eight grade, because there's five points on each, um, on each, um, grade level and, um, there's five steps on each, um, grade level and, um, it would just, she's already at the max of S seven and this would mean that she would just go max out and there would be no further steps and there is no longevity for this employee. She has pulled the change on longevity, so she doesn't get that at the moment, so that wouldn't be an issue. So, um, that's what I'm asking for. Um, I think it's very, uh, appropriate to just mention the number of people that she supervises, as I say, is five people and, uh, you know, we're talking about, uh, a department of activity with the public where, um, customer service and, um, this person is responsible for training the staff to respond in, uh, appropriate manner.
Okay, any questions?
Basically my pitch, thank you for listening.
Any questions? Melissa?
Just for clarification, cause it's come up a couple times today, uh, any employee hired after September first of two thousand and fifteen is not eligible for longevity. Longevity is, um, for employees who have been in the town ten years or more, so therefore, um, you, anyone who was, you, you know what I mean? So even if you were hired in two thousand and fifteen before September, you, you would have to, um, so, so someone could get it in twenty-five, um, but they're not a recent employee and the steps typically take, as you just saw in the schedule, five years, so it's, they get, they get their steps, they wait the five years and then there's a schedule, um, from ten years, fifteen, twenty and twenty-five, I think thirty as well.
If I may, for clarification purposes, please, just to say that this person doesn't get longevity now and will not be entitled to longevity, because she came in after the longevity was taken, you know, as a benefit, was no longer, um, applying as a benefit.
Okay, thank, Counsel Kachana?
Thank you. As I read this, did, am I understanding that two percent, is that COLA raises? So regardless of performance, we give out cost of living raises regardless of how someone performs yearly? And how is that determined that we give COLAs to employees?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, one of the things that I discussed when I first came in here and I'm still trying to get to is I, I met with, um, Ms. Ferrin to talk about putting in place a, um, a review process. I do not believe that had happened prior in, in previous years, so we pulled out some forms that were used probably from a town manager, not the, my immediate predecessor, but maybe one or two back and I have those as drafts that I was gonna look at and get together with department heads and talk about implementing that, because I, I, I'm familiar with that in other communities, so I think it would be appropriate to have it here. Nothing else other than to set goals and objectives for our employees, you know, I meet plenty of good people here, I, I, no doubt that they're working hard, but you can establish goals and objectives and make sure things are getting done with those types of reviews, so it is something that is on my, my list of things to do and accomplish in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you. Have, if I can continue, have we calculated the cost savings if we didn't go forward with the COLA?
Uh, I do not have one at, offhand, I mean, I'm sure we could take very quickly, um, the total salary line item and then just roll back the two percent and that, but actually, I don't know if it's that easy, cause we have certain obligations due to the union contracts, we, it would, would take a little bit, but I'm sure I could get you a number.
I'm not devaluing any of the employees in town hall and they're all very valuable. The point I'm trying to make is when we take a look at, especially this past year, that in my opinion, the two percent is substantial, when we are looking at level funding of budget and cutting costs wherever we possibly can. So it's my opinion that the two percent is, um, it's a lot of money, especially this year, when it's not based on performance. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would say is unlike many other town halls in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this town hall, since I've been here, these employees have been showing up every day and for the vast majority of the time, those doors have been open to the public, unlike a lot of other agencies at the state level. So these people have been dealing firsthand with people, customers coming in, not every customer wears their mask appropriately, so, um, I think, you know, we've had extraordinary results, people are cooperating and volunteering, as you heard, with the vaccine distribution. I think this year has been trying on a lot of individuals, but a lot of individuals had the option of working remotely, our employees did not. So I, I just wanna remind everybody that they've been doing the yeoman's work here, um, not a day goes by, when those doors were shut, that I watched people doing curbside service and running out and taking care of things, so our people performed quite well under the circumstances this past year, just keep that in mind when you're talking about these things.
Thank you.
Thank you. I speak to Counsel Kachana's, uh, question. So historically speaking, from my time back when the town hall was union, um, along with everything else, now, I'm not a believer that there should be the increases even that unions get, you know, we put in that two and a half percent or three percent or whatever it is and they get it all the time, it's part of their contracts, their obligations. When Chris Clark was here and the town hall went, and Karen could speak to this, I'm sure, she's been here a long time, um, when it went from union to, uh, to non-union, there sort of was this unspoken conversation, or there was a spoken conversation really, it was, it was discussed that, uh, they were not gonna lose out by not being union. Now, keep in mind, people were complaining that being union, paying dues and really not getting much for it, wasn't doing much for them, so if you ask me, it was a win-win on both sides, but they always said, well, we'll always keep, keep good, our promise to, you know, get your two percent or whatever. Now, over the years, in my time, um, in, in serving, many people complained, as you are right now, that where's the performance review? Why haven't we not gone to performance-based, um, raises and such? And we just haven't had very good quality, it, some have tried, um, but they were short-term and the last long-term didn't implement, so that two percent thing, that let's adjust it, um, let's give it a cost of living, call it what you want, has been going on for a long time and it was, again, the premise was, the town hall went from union to non-union, no negotiations, no more issues and we're gonna keep them as whole as we can keep them, just like we keep the fire and the police and the school and then everybody else. Like you, I don't believe that's a, you know, a good reason, but that's kinda the history of where it came from, that a while back when they, when they switched from union to non-union and they've been getting, uh, regardless, so, um, new regime, new, you know, council can do what they want, people can say, they can pay, they could say, we're gonna go back to union, well, maybe they need to go back, maybe that's their, their, that's their right, but are they gonna really get much for their money for going back to union? I think they're treated well here, I think they're getting good benefits here and good pay for, for all that's being done and kudos to them for stepping up during COVID, but we're talking about long-term here, I, you know, we're talking about the last twelve years that I'm familiar with, so, just saying, that's where the, it just sorta has always been the way, you know? And nobody's willing to put the hammer down and say no during budget time, officially no.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the only, I mean, they could go back to, the only thing I worry about is if we cut the two percent increase for non-union employees, all it does is give them an incentive to join the union, for one, for two, that increases costs of the town, because now we're gonna have, be negotiating with a union and other union personnel when we could just be dealing with just a two percent COLA increase. I'm of the position that since it's in our union contracts, we should continue to honor it for our non-union employees, so we don't get the increased cost of them unionizing. That's, at the end of the day, we're saving money doing it this way. If we go back and get rid of the COLA here, that... If we go back and get rid of the COLA here, that incentivizes them to join a union and increase our costs overall. So I think this is a win-win, as was stated before, for the town. And I wouldn't want to risk putting further costs and actually end up defeating the purpose of getting rid of the COLAs, which was to save money, to now only incur more money, more spending. So that's my perspective on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I basically agree with Counselor Ryan. However, I think, in the long-term issue, I think we've seen this, that in a long-term fiscal point, I think Denise and Joe are both also correct, in that as long as the unions have it baked into their contract, we have to do the same thing for the Town Hall non-union people. But in the long run, doing two percent every year is exponentially unsustainable to the budget. We've got to figure out some other way to do something over the long term. And I honestly don't know where to begin, because it is going on pretty much everywhere. Most of the towns are doing it. And that's one of the big reasons why so many of our, so many of the sections of our budget have been rising so far over the time I've been on council and the time that Counselor, that former Counselor Clements was on council before me. You know, that's why this budget keeps climbing. It's mostly because of listings and insurance costs and debt interest costs. Those are the three big killers to the budget. And I don't know how we deal with it. I don't know how we talk about these issues in a way that everybody brings everybody to the table and tries to solve the issue before it just drives the town budget over the cliff. Because eventually, the people can't afford to keep paying constantly rising budgets. Yet we also, we also understand why we need to do it. Kind of a huge catch-22.
Y'all set?
Yes.
Ms. Shea?
You're looking at the town of Southbridge. Cost of living is a national issue, a global issue. When I go to the Big Bunny, my bread is more expensive every week, my milk is more expensive every week. If I'm not getting a pay raise, which now I'm on the fixed income, I notice there's no place, if every other thing in the world, my bread, my milk, my soda, my movie tickets, everything is going up at what the government tells us is an average cost of increase, then if I am working this year without a raise, I am going backwards. It is not the kind of, when you're just giving basically a cost of living raise, you are just keeping people even to where they were last year. Level funded is one thing. This is level, you know, kind of more expense. If I, you know, if people start... In two years, you would have fallen behind closer to five percent. And you're going to now really start to be in an area which you hurt. And you're going to be looking for other jobs. Or we're going to go on unemployment, and then we'll get to pay us and not be there. Another issue with business versus the town, we can only give you a raise July one. If something weird happens and the cost of living goes up, or it goes down, we can't make those adjustments during the year. We get one shot at making a salary adjustment for anybody, and that's July one.
Okay. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, just to respond, I completely agree with you, Martina. That's the catch-22. All of the costs are going up, and we have the issue of supposedly there's not much interest going on. But there is, there's not much inflation supposedly. But all of these things are, that completely excludes food and fuel and rent and all this other stuff that's killing people. How do we stop this whole spike of things that's going through the roof?
And those are the things that the average employee pays for.
Okay.
We are, we can't afford to do a lot of these things. That's the catch. I totally agree with you.
Ms. Clements?
I just want to pay for performance, plain and simple. You have a good evaluation, you get a raise. It's, you know, you get your two percent, but you got to have a good evaluation. Because this across-the-board stuff, everybody's fair in life, it's not like that. And everybody should have incentive to do better. And how do you get your raise? You do better. Pay for performance, get a good evaluation. So I understand your concept, but I don't agree in across-the-board personally. So I just want to be, that was really clear, because I don't know if perhaps Counsel Ryan realized that.
I understand.
It's an evaluation. It's an evaluation, and as long as the job is being done, they're being evaluated, they're going to get their two percent. But they shouldn't get it if they're not a good employee. It shouldn't just be because you live here.
They shouldn't be working here if they're not a good employee.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm not going to argue, I'm just saying, like every other job that we all, you know, that you have to pay, you got to have a good performance, that's all. So just...
I'll just say, this has always been, in my whole tenure as an elected official, has always been a question that we talk about a lot, and as the, on the public body side. I know Martina could put her hat on as the union side, and we sat there. And I know in school committee, we used to sit a lot about, you know, the superintendent, with the superintendent to talk about people that were non-union, and how do you compensate? And we talked about that whole performance-based measures and all that. So it's a good conversation to have later on. But when the previous management, I'll say, did no evaluations at all, and I know when the town manager walked in and said, hey, can you show me the evaluations over the last five years? And there's none. It's kind of tough. So I understand both sides. And I know, as an employee, you know, I just had my performance reviewed, so I get raised based on performance. It's a good conversation, I think, to have throughout the year, to talk about how do governments do this? How do municipalities do that that's equitable? And how do you rate that? But you really have to have an adopted personnel practice that says, hey, if we have a personnel or performance review, and this is the official adopted performance review of the town, based on this scale, and then that expectation to the employees are, if you are rated at this, this is how we're going to look at. And then authorize the town manager to say, whatever it is, a pot of money, I don't know how you would do that. That's some of the stuff we talked about in the past, was do you authorize a pot of money, say, that would say be two percent of the overall budget of those group of employees? And then you sit there going, based on performance, you know, if everybody gets two percent, they get two percent. If it's one percent, hey, you have to level up your... And then how do you do that? But then also balance the union, non-union type of approach. So it is a conversation that not going to be solved this evening, but something that I think we could entertain to discuss, to see how that goes. Because I'm of the vein that, yeah, and we all know, there are certain ways that employees are protected, if they're good or bad. And non-union is a different scope, and how do you balance that approach? But that's conversations that I think you have to have with employees and counselors, and get feedback with the management, and how this would all work, so that the employee itself feels valued and treated fairly. So that's, it's a long conversation. But do they deserve a two percent COLA this year? I believe they do. I believe that, to the town manager's point, we put a lot of pressure on town employees to show up during COVID, when other towns just simply closed their doors. And they said, go ahead, sit at home, don't work, don't come in, you know, skate by. And I know as a chairman, and we put a lot of pressure on the town manager, the Town Hall needs to be open. We're in a people business, we're in a service delivery business. We can't operate that way. We did that with some union employees too, where DPWs, our police and fire didn't have the option to stay at home. Many, many towns, DPW workers sat at home for periods of time, didn't want to come in, and we really did. So I value every employee here for this COVID year. It's been one year of them working under difficult conversations. I get other service industries have done the same. But when it comes to municipalities, our union, our people have stepped up to the plate. And above all else, I deserve their raises this year. And then we talk about how do we implement performance management and all that.
Mr. Town Manager?
I was just going to add that I alluded to it at the regular council meeting the other night, that Melissa Zawinski had approached me. She wanted to look at a community compact grant that would allow us to get a consultant to come in and perform an assessment and an evaluation, and create an implementation plan for how we do our human resources operations. And that was something we were looking at doing, because we have had, you know, we've been working with the school department with regard to our onboarding and looking at how we do benefits management and different things. But this would also play into that. And, you know, we could look at how we do, how we do our evaluations, how we would implement all that as well. So I'm sure we can include that. You know, she's working on that application, we're hoping to get that submitted. And then if we're awarded, I'll come back to the council, as I said. But, you know, these are all things that are going through the backs of our minds. As you all know, we're trying, there's a lot of things on my list. I'm still here, as I like to remind people, just seven months. Pretty soon it will get old, me saying how many months, because, you know, it's been a good experience. But there's a lot of things that I bring to the table and the staff do from their experience in other communities. And that's one of the great things, we can have a dialogue, Karen, Melissa, other, you know, I've had them with Will and Heather as well. I'm willing to listen to staff, they have great ideas, and this is how these things come to fruition. They say, can I go and apply for this? And I was thinking the same thing, how do we implement this? And this is how we can do things better going forward, and, you know, do things that will appeal to the citizenry as well as the council.
Counsel Kachana?
Thank you. Just staying with the budget, can you email what the two percent would cost in this budget?
So just to be clear, if we would take all non-union people on the town side and then not increase...
Correct. Just the cost.
That was done one year, just so you know. Wasn't as much as we thought.
That's what I wanted, that's...
Yeah, it really wasn't. And I think, just did one of those.
Yeah. Just thinking about it, if you went to a lot of, well, no.
Thank you.
I'll look into it.
Okay.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. I just kind of want to build off your comments. We've had some people who said...
Can you just take into the mic?
Oh, yes, sorry. Still getting used to being back up here. While some communities, to steal a comment from somebody, while some communities were mailing it in, our staff who are here, they gave their hardest, our school teachers, everybody, our DPW, our police and fire, our Town Hall employees, they were here most of the time, unless there was a specific outbreak here in Town Hall, right? So I just, I feel like this is something worthy of discussion, but this is not something I would want to talk about cutting, when they've been working harder than a lot of towns around us. And I think they deserve the recognition with a simple two percent increase, which for some of them, is not very much.
Right. That's it. And just part of that group, I believe, is police-fire chiefs, deputy chiefs. I can speak to the position, I won't speak to the personality, but those positions have done yeoman's work when it's come to COVID. I mean, you take a look at the Emergency Operations Center to say, hey, I'm not going to give the police and fire chief and deputy chiefs and lieutenants their raises based on the fact that not only were they managing their own departments, they were managing our emergency operations center, and the finance department as well. The finance department has taken on additional responsibilities, securing FEMA grants, reimbursements, to the tunes of millions of dollars now to our town. The fire deputy chief, chief, tracking overtime, working hard and diligently to recoup overtime monies that the town spent, and getting those monies back through CARES. DPW director out there doing the emergency dispensing site, a lot of work throughout these employees, stepping up as their leadership demands, and we expect. But they've done their yeoman's work, above and beyond, to be able to put the town... I would say, I've had this conversation, I don't want to get on a big rant, but conversation over my travels across the country with my son about the whole COVID vaccination and some of the research that he's done on how we set up our emergency management thing, and what he's read about, about the... We were, the town of Southbridge has been modeled in other communities to their dispensing site because of the leadership that we had in those department heads and the actions of this town. So I fully support a two percent this year. So any other discussion on it?
I think you just argued for a much higher raise.
Okay. So you're not roll call, Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Mar, uh, Ketti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries four-one, with Counsel Mar Ketti opposed. Agenda item twenty-one, discuss amendment Schedule V to approve a two percent increase effective July first, 2021, as presented, the minimum wage increase of January first, 2022. Entertain motion to recommend to council for approval. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There you go, Counsel Ryan and Citizen Member Shea. Any discussion on this? This is, I think, along the same lines as the previous agenda item. Do we have any other comments on that? So you're not on roll call, Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Mar Ketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Citizen Member Clements?
Yes.
Citizen Member Shea?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. Item twenty-two, last one, discuss a transfer from project number six-seven-nine-zero-zero, landfill royalties, to project number eight-three-six-zero-zero, in the amount of $150,000 for the FY 2021 OPEB, and entertain motion, recommend to council for approval. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Counsel Ryan and Citizen Member Clements? Who wants to take this one?
As I alluded to in the introductory memo from the budget, one of the things that Standard and Poor's looked at when they did the last ratings with the town, and one of their concerns was the growing liability that we have for our retirements as well as the other post-employment benefits. So when I looked at things, and I spoke to Ms. Harnoyes, as well as Ms. Zawinski, about things that we need to do to maintain our current bond rating, which allows us to save money when we go out, when we refinance, and when we look at future projects such as pavement management, I'm sure, facilities management, and even when we go out at some point to take care of the fire station, regardless of how we do it, we're going to be doing future borrowing. It's important that we maintain our bond rating, and if nothing else, improve it, so that we can get better rates. And I felt that, looking at what had been done in the past, and I believe last year we didn't make any contribution, that it would be important, especially with us going in to ratings call in the next two weeks, for these anticipated refundings and these borrowings, that we demonstrate that we are going forward in trying to address these long-term liabilities. At some point, you know, we're bound to it with regard to our assessment on the retirement liabilities, the pension liability, not so much on the OPEB. That's how you can get away with not putting in. But we should be contributing so that we don't amass this large liability down the road that we'll be passing on to future generations of Southbridge residents, but also demonstrating to the people that want to invest in our bonds that, yes, we have a good financial plan, we are going to take care of our liabilities. So it's a modest amount, I mean, relative to what we could be doing or other communities could be doing. But compared to the previous year, I think it's a step in the right direction, and I would just respectfully ask for your support for that.
Last year, I know we discussed this at length, and the recommendation at the time was not to put as much money in due to COVID and the uncertainty in the cycle. But the former manager, I thought, had a plan to use solar monies to fund OPEB and put to OPEB. What happened, where is that solar money now going to?
Budgeted as general fund revenue.
General fund revenue?
Yes.
Okay. And how much was that per year, roughly, approximately?
I believe it was seventy, seventy-one thousand. I believe we did seventy-one thousand solar, seventy-nine thousand from the royalty, and we actually did do one hundred and fifty last year. We just haven't done anything for this fiscal year yet. Fiscal twenty-one.
So are you doing, through accounting principles, then, taking that... taking that solar money and just going into a general fund account now as a receipt?
Yes.
Instead of a dedicated source for OPEB?
Correct.
Counsel Ryan?
Just kind of to follow up on that. I have a couple of questions. One, you, because you made me think of this. Should, could that be something we specifically designate to go into OPEB?
Could.
Okay. And I guess my second question is, you said you request 150,000 from an account that's balanced at $3,991,779. Is that, is that enough? Because I know we're significantly lacking, as are most communities, when it comes to OPEB. And is this something that we should be considering putting more? Maybe not this year, but going forward, putting more than $150,000 in annually?
Yes. But as I said, I think it's a step in the right direction. I mean, I'm balancing what I hear from counselors, balancing the unknowns that we were still dealing with when we were looking at all this due to COVID. Things may change with regard to funding in the next six, 12 months due to the various monies that may be coming from Washington. Right now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is having unprecedented revenue generation through tax collection that they, they're blowing away. It was actually a quote that the DOR was being blown out of the water because the revenue collection from taxes is higher than it's been in the last five years. So there's this optimism that revenues are going to come back. But at the time, when we were thinking about all this, how could we demonstrate our commitment to this and still make sure that we were working within a level of service budget? So to your point, down the road, should we be working towards increasing that? Yes. Do we have to be mindful of what we're getting from revenue? Yes. And hopefully, we'll see a restoration of a lot of those local receipts, including the hotel meals tax and other things. And, you know, we're still at the very early stages. We haven't seen, it's just this quarter now that we'll be able to see any generation from the local option tax for marijuana, which we said we would like to use for the pavement management. But who knows what the future holds for that? We could generate more. I already know that we have somebody looking for another host community agreement for cultivation. There's other opportunities that may present themselves to the town to get things, and those might be sources down the road for some of these things as well. So, yes, good start, step in the right direction. But we keep our mind open to increasing that as we can.
If I can continue, Mr. Chair. Optimally, how much do you think we should be putting in to address this problem? In that it was the best of circumstances?
I think I would have to look at it. See, there's, they do, with the pension system, they do an actuarial evaluation and you're assessed a certain amount. I mean, I suppose we could do a similar calculation here and come up with a dollar figure. I just don't have one for you today.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested to know that because this is something that is important. It is going to be a huge drain on the.
They're speaking to the mic there.
It is something that's going to be a huge drain on the town going forward. So if we can try to get ahead of this and try putting more money in, this is something I think in the long term, we should be doing. We should be investing in this. So if you could, whenever you have the time, find that number. I know where, I ask you a lot. So if we could find out what the optimal number would be, I'd appreciate that.
Karen?
Yes, just a couple of things, just to kind of put it in perspective. I believe that the latest valuation that we did had the total liability at about $47 million. So it's, it's very large compared to what we put in. Right now, we have in the OPEB trust before the 150,000, if the council so chooses to put it in, the balance is $1,581,964. I mean, it's a bit, it's a big nut for sure. But I think we also saw when Bay Path was, was here talking about theirs, that they're putting small amounts in there. But at least it shows a commitment towards that liability.
Yeah, so that's what the auditors always said too, in the years past, when Chris Clark was doing it and when it continued for, when we were addressing all those issues, that was a big deal in the audit. It would always come back as favorable that we had a plan in place. And we looked good to this date.
Yeah. My only follow-up question was the fact that I think in previous, in my previous three years in council, we were told that the solar money was that going to be that recurring revenue stream for OPEB?
With the landfill closing.
Right, because of the fact that it would be maybe over a 20-year term, but it wasn't an infinite.
Right. But, you know, if that money's going to general revenue as a revenue source now, but we can't, we have to keep an eye on the ball that this has to continue to be worked on.
So I think the best thing that maybe the town manager and myself can look at going forward, bringing something to the town council to actually adopt a policy, like, like we did when Chris Clark was here, we actually did have, we were taking some of the landfill monies, but then the landfill didn't last as long, only had half the life. So maybe town manager and myself can, can come to the town council with a policy that we would recommend and the town council can, can discuss it so that we can put it in place going forward.
Thank you. Counsel Mar Keddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I remember going back when Chris Clark started doing this. We were using landfill royalty money into the OPEB account. And I disagreed with it at the time because, well, it seemed to me, at the time, it just seemed to me that the landfill money, royalty money was coming in and none of it was going towards infrastructure. It was all going for town employee benefits. A lot of the residents who had to put up with the smell and the traffic and the contamination, they weren't getting any benefits out of the landfill money. It was all going into town employee benefits such as OPEB. I agree with you. At the time when we finally, the landfill was voted down, the town manager said that he was going to use solar money. And that's what I think, that's where I think the money was, should come from because that's what he said. I'm looking at the receipts that I received from Ms. Harnoyes. The land, solar revenue was 76,000. So in my opinion, that's where it should come from, from solar. The, I know when it was coming from, when Chris Clark started that, they were putting more than the state was even requiring us to put in. Now, I don't know if that's the case today. But at that time, we were putting more. The state had said you should put in such and such amount, and we were putting more than that in. I personally think the landfill money should be saved for must haves. And next year, we're going to have to deal with curbside garbage collection. And we're going to have to deal with stormwater management. And that's what that money should be reserved for. I remember when we did the, back in 2007, when we did the landfill extent, the original extension agreement. And Attorney Giorgio sat up there and said, in the future, we would be receiving 1 million royalty payments each year. It will go into an unrestricted, restricted account for any purpose for which the council decides to appropriate the funds. And my own opinion is we should save that money for curbside and stormwater because those are must haves and we absolutely have to take care of that probably starting next year. I would rather see it come out of solar money. If, my own opinion, if this could be cut in half. Unless that this is the minimum amount, then I guess we'll have to find some other, other avenues for, for the money. But if this is more than we have to by state law, then I would say that we should not do it this much this year. And definitely not out of landfill royalties. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan?
So I, through you, Mr. Chair, I have no problem with the idea that maybe the funds could come from somewhere else in the budget. I think that's something worth investigating. However, I don't support cutting the amount. This is a big problem. And in my opinion, that short-sighted thinking, we have to think about the long term. We have to think about what the, these other post-employment benefits and the costs are going to be in the long term. This is not something I want to pass down to my children and my grandchildren later on to deal with. This is a problem we should deal with now. And if we can invest a little bit more right now in making sure that these benefits are covered, we should do so. This is a long-term problem that needs a solution. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Hi, thank you. I know, I think in previous years, I've stated how I feel. I don't particularly like the whole concept of OPEB. I understand, I kind of understand, I understand what Counsel Ryan was just saying. And I, and I agree from that point. It's kind of a catch 22 of having to juggle two or three or four long-term concerns in these situations. Because I, because I also agree with what Counsel Mar Keddie was just saying about we need to be stable, saving the landfill money for the curbside stormwater roads and other major things. And investing in those things are just as much of importance in the long term as trying to avoid passing off retirement and OPEB costs to future generations. What kind of, once again, this seems to be coming up over and over again, being caught in a catch 22 of trying to budget, budget today for stuff that's going to hit us in 40 years. That is something that's always, that's always frustrated me. And I've never, I've never really liked having to pre-fund OPEB. For, to refer to what Counsel Mar Keddie asked, there is no state requirement for funding OPEB, whereas there is a state requirement for funding retirement. And I think Counsel Ryan earlier mentioned something about the landfill account. And I had forgotten what that was. But that's pretty much what I had to say.
Okay. Any other discussion? See none? Roll call, Counsel Steves?
No.